Okay, the time is now 5:38 PM. And we will call this meeting to order. This meeting is a joint meeting of the City, Harlingen City Commission and the Harlingen Waterworks Utility Board of Trustees. And we do have a quorum for the City Commission.
I didn't know what you mean to call. Yes, I like to call the order, call to order the meeting for the special joint meeting of the City of Harlingen and the Waterworks. We do have a question.
Fantastic. Okay, now I'll ask everyone to please stand for the invocation. Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us to gather today to do the work of the people. I ask that you help and preside over this meeting to ensure that we are efficient with our time and we are productive and we work together in order to collaborate for the betterment of our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
And now the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that's right, I saw him, sorry. Okay, Aaron, if you, would you please read the conflict of interest?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members who have a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Thank you, repair. And thanks for our board, do we have any conflict of interest?
None.
None.
All right, fantastic. We'll move on to city, citizen communication for the City of Harlingen. Amanda?
Yes, we have Desi Martinez.
Point of clarification there, we have two or three minutes?
Three. Well, I have three minutes.
Three minutes.
My name is Desi Martinez, 1806 Hatterford. Since 1972, I've been working for cities. And so, as in Canton County and up and down, up and down the coast. I offer you, and I have been offering you, and I've been passing out information, I will continue to beat the drum, that we need a more simpler, a more simpler and working program on a good water system than we have. Having been a board member myself, we have a good water system. Our sewer detail, since I was a board member, I don't know where it is today, apparently they've come up with a quarter billion dollars worth of improvements in the next five years to go with the increased rates dramatically, up to $60 for the minimum. I offer a three-step plan. And it includes a two-year entry plan, like any corporation, any business, and being an economist, you're listening to the old, but changes are required because that's how we cut the bills down. That's how we do things in South Texas. We're resilient, we're good, and we have the best system in South Texas with affordable rates. If we're going to keep on affordable, we know we need to improve it, but we're going to improve it with a simple task at school. I learned at business school, and I practiced it all my 52 years in the industry. And it is change equals opportunity, AKA CEO. Murphy, you know what the, we came with you back in pharmaceuticals, the days we were developing, and change was hard. And now, the biggest industry here in Harlingen is $1.2 billion industry in health. Boom, well, change is, and this business, it's a business, a public business, has the same principles, applies to the city's plants and infrastructure. Change charter, first of all. The charter, section TDC, Public Utilities, has always been misrepresented. It still has its own word, it tells the old word of 1986, of grants of those old days. They never improved it. And it says we, that capital improvements can be paid by grants, city grants, but it just needs to be updated next November, when our two-year entry plan is going up to Austin and asked for more grants, because we have one of the poorest areas in South Texas. You know that, that's why you have a big medical industry, Medicaid, Medicare, and insurance, et cetera. But change is important in another way, and the emergency Roy H. Project, Mayor, may I finish, it took three years for this. Public Utilities, by adding the words and matching funding for emergency aid projects and Texas programs, as TERS and the May 2007 voter-approved 4A and 4B sales taxes. We can use some of the money we have if we do a little bit of change, 15 words. Simplicity, keep it clear, I've asked transparency, I have no information with the Water Works since I got off the board. Look at the website, says nothing. Yet we have a quarter billion dollars here. Simplicity to get that, and I have offered a $5 minimum or a affordable rate to start up a two-year entry plan. How many economists, they hired an economist also, and they hired engineers. We know how to do change. And finally, simplicity, understanding, and hard work, and keep the resilience will be done, because we have 37% of our population, Mayor, and thank you for reminding these folks all the time, 35%, Murphy, Steve, and Lady Bolt, I don't know the rest of the crowd, 35% of this community, is disabled or over 65. To understand that we need to change and Tim needs to work with all of us that have been in the business, not just consultants coming out and putting a, dropping a freight train on us, I don't kick the, I don't kick the can on anything. But I don't want a freight train on our population. And this is a freight train, we can enter into it, and we can make it work, keep the same system we have growing, including our base rate. The committee, thank you for the committee, Mayor, that's a darn good thing to do, because it brings us into the circle. And we need to update that circle around it and help them, because they need the help, they need the money. It's going to, water sewer drainage needs a lot of money, thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Amanda?
We have Jennifer Bogers.
You can stand wherever you like.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, 2901 Tucker Road, and I was just, I just moved on Tucker Road two years, and I've had sewer system, the drains have backed up, I'm so sorry, I wasn't prepared for this, two times already, I've had, in the last years, I've had to drain out twice, so it's something that affects even my kids, like, they can't take baths. Every time I have to call someone to, the sewer system to, the sewage system to come pump out, they're like, you're using too much water, where I have three kids and myself. So, it's not possible that my mom, who lives one street down, has been there 15 years, and one time has to, had to have pump, and I've only been there two years, and this is already the second time. So, it's an issue like that me and my family have been going through, so it's something that's very important that we, that we get a solution.
Thank you. Thank you so much, we appreciate you coming to share that with us. And I'm sure Commissioner Perez will follow up with you.
Oh, there's no people.
Okay.
No, I have, they didn't have a chance to sign up, but there's more people that would like to speak.
Okay.
Good job, Jennifer?
Yes. So, just echoing on what she said, Mike Martinez, I live at 2506 Brianna Circle as well. I've been there for 10 years, so I really can attest to, you know, what she's going through. Unfortunately, we're the last leg there on Brianna Circle, so not just only me, but the rest of the residents have been struggling with the, with the non-sewers out there. For those who are not on a sewer system, it's very hard, you know, to make that point when across, but she is totally right. Anytime rain falls, we are very limited onto what we do on a daily basis, from washing to showering to just, just overall keeping the water levels down, and that's just the way that, that some sewer systems work. Unfortunately, the soils that are out there don't work in our favor. And so, we've had many meetings before to address this, and I know there's plans, but if there's any monies out there, like Mr. Desi Martinez had said earlier, advocating for, advocating for any funds that can be used, you know, and the City of Harlingen can utilize those funds. It's, I mean, we're so, we're so close to the infrastructure, it's just not, I mean, we see it every day, it's very close. Harlingen South facilities as well, they're not on this, on sewer system. I don't know about the school, but when it comes to the baseball, they're also on a septic system, so I'm sure they would be lobbying, you know, to get the, you know, sewers ran over to that, that section of the, of the, of the city. So, I just wanted to share that with, with everybody, and if anybody else has any issues, I would encourage you guys to voice those as well today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Candy Lopez, and I'm here because I don't have the experience yet of living there on Brianna and Tucker, but I'm building a home, it's right in the corner, and I have heard issues from our neighbors of, I guess, the septic tanks clogging up and the smell, and I know that right now we're having an issue because the, it's, the dirt has to be a certain number to, to get the septic tank, tanks in, so I'm just here because I'm concerned, because in the future, well, hopefully, it gets taken care of.
Good evening, my name is Eliseo Perez Jr. I live on 2505 Brianna Circle. I've been at that address since 2002. Our home was built on Brianna, and it is a wonderful place to live here in Harlingen, especially in that neighborhood. We're right next to the south Lady Hawks and Boys Baseball Field, which is about 200 or 300 yards away in our subdivision. And since I've been there, and my family and my wife and kids, 2002, we've weathered many problems, especially like, an example is Hurricane Dolly. Like everywhere else, our neighborhood was torched with water, and the grounds were saturated in every house in that neighborhood. There must have been at least 20 to 30 houses. They were saturated, we couldn't flush, we couldn't take showers, because the water would go back up. Any heavy rainstorm, since Dolly, any heavy rainstorm, we've been fortunate, but other houses have, have, have had problems with their septic tanks because of the lack of sewer treatments, or sewer lines in our neighborhood. And I've been through several meetings that I've attended here about implementing a new water lines or sewer system, and yeah, it was, it wasn't very encouraging from the meeting that we've had. But supposedly, from what I'm hearing now, is that there may be funds to alleviate that problem, it would certainly help not only our lives in that neighborhood that live in that area, but the value of our homes and make Harlingen prouder, you know, for these people that spend, you know, their time, money, and effort to live here, and especially on Brianna Circle. So, I'm hoping that, you know, something can be done and get fixed, and the whole neighborhood of Brianna Circle can enjoy the sewer lines like many other residents in Harlingen has. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lulu Andrade, and I live on, also on Brianna Circle. And I personally haven't had issues with the septic tanks, but I do notice every time I come out, there's a smell, like, it's not a pleasant smell. And I know it's probably, you know, my neighbors, and I've already had, like, problems with neighbors, because I can see the water, like, coming out, and I do, you know, that's, that is the problem, like, I go out and it smells, and it's, you know, it's not pleasant, it's not helping, yeah, it's a bad smell.
Hello, my name is Eric Ramirez, I live on 3004 Tucker Road also. I'm echoing just what my neighbors are saying. Some of my neighbors couldn't be here, so I told them I would come here for them also, a little, they're elderly, and, and they couldn't come out, either they're working or they just couldn't come, but yes, I, you know, a lot of the older, you know, neighbors don't know really about, one of my neighbors, she's there from Michigan, they don't really know about the sewer system, you know, about the, they, they thought everything was connected to the city, and, you know, when I told them, I said, no, you're, you know, you're on septic tank, you know, so I kind of help them out as much as I can, trying to, to guide them through the process of what they need to do. But just imagine, put in, you know, put yourselves in our shoes, if you couldn't take a bath, or your kid couldn't take a bath because, you know, you were stocked up, you know, everything, there was actually, like, stuff coming out of the, you know, out of your drains and stuff like that, so, and the smell is horrific, it's, it's not healthy. I'm sure if, you know, we do do this, this, make this cost, you know, it's just going to provide better, better living for, for all of the situation. It's a beautiful neighborhood, it's, the only thing is just that, the smell and, you know, the unsafe, it's just, yeah.
It's an unhealthy condition, I've held it for years and they haven't funded it.
So, we, we, we're just taking, trying to take a step forward, and if y'all can help us, thank you for listening to us, and, and, you know, thank you.
Was there anybody else?
So, thank you so much, all of you, for coming out and joining us. I know it's, it's sometimes a little intimidating to, to speak, but it is important to have that community engagement. We're going to continue to have these types of conversations, and we encourage you to come out. Did things a little bit differently today, we normally, you have to sign up to speak and provide a little bit of information, but I encourage you to continue to do that. Come to additional meetings, so that way we can hear from you, it's important. I wanted to make sure to open it up for everyone that came and took time out of your day to be here, I'm sure that the board appreciates it, I know the commission does as well, so thank you so much, we're going to work really hard to see what we can do for you. We encourage you to stick around and listen to the conversation if you'd like. And that's, that's all we have, right?
That's all we have.
Okay. Is there any citizen communication on the, okay. All right. So, moving on to item one, presentation by the Waterworks on Capital Improvement Plans for Water Sewer Meters and Facilities Infrastructure. Tim?
Thank you very much, thank you all for coming out and agreeing to yet another joint meeting. I think we're getting closer to the end of the rate study process. I, I have a presentation purpose and outline slide here, and to lead off, there was an expressed interest at the last joint meeting on January the 8th to review capital projects, and so this is an opportunity to do that. I do have some structure here that I'm going to, I can try to follow, but if, if anyone wants to drill down on a specific project, we can, this is your meeting to dive into this question, so with that, I'll move forward. So, we do have a list of comprehensive prioritized projects by category, you've been handed a handout, on the first side of the sheet, you've got wastewater, and you've got water capital improvement plans, and on the backside, you have meter and facilities. Just to give you a guide, there is, in each of those categories, a prioritized number, then there's also a column that's titled MP, that indicates which projects were our master plan projects, and I'll explain that in just a second. We do have a cost for the project, and then there's some wording about an obligation year, and this was really born out of the initial look when we were trying to understand when financial obligations might be incurred for those projects. So, I think what I'd like to do is to talk about general needs in each of these categories, whether they be capacity, failing asset or infrastructure condition, or the need for growth, and then we can move into project definition, talk about specific project location on a map, I'm going to try and use Google Earth extensively to show where these projects are located. We do have some photos to explain what some of the need is, and there are policy implications that come about because of some of the projects, and I think we've got an opportunity to dive into that question. We, we may also talk a little bit about public outreach and the progress we've been making to date, what the status is there, and I would also like to, if possible, talk about establishing a date for the next meeting, within the next one to two weeks, if possible. So, with that, we did undertake a master plan, commissioned it in 2019, and completed it in 2022. We spent, and that, normally a process that would take nine to 12 months, we ended up spending about three years on it, and we went through an exhaustive process, staff was heavily involved, we asked a consultant for more work than I think they got paid for, but I think we got what we paid for out of that, that process. There are also non-master plan projects, including raw water, meters, generators, treatment plants, that don't have to do with capacity, performance issues, water rights, and facilities, and so these were not in the scope of the master plan. We could have, but that would have made a much bigger, more complicated process. So, we have combined both the master plan and the non-master plan projects into our comprehensive capital improvement plan, and that is what has been represented and what is being used in the rate study to develop the various rate plan options. The master plan originally used 2020 cost data, and so the, if you've got a copy of the master plan, that's 2020 costs, what's happened over the past three, three and a half years, the average cost for construction on our projects has gone up by about 75%. Our consultants updated that just several, just a few months ago, and if you're talking about a pipeline project, those costs are now double what they were just three to three and a half years ago. So, the need for capital improvement projects, combined with the inflation, the extreme inflation in construction costs, have come together to create a difficult situation where the costs that are represented in our capital improvement plan are much higher than we would have thought just several years ago. Just another introductory comment, the, the master plan uses, used calibrated hydraulic modeling, and it looked at periods of 2020, 2025, 2030, and 2040, and assuming a one and a half percent population growth, your needs change over time with that kind of growth. The models looked at flow conditions, whether it was water, it looked at the maximum demand, your hot, dry day, when people are using the most water for irrigation, and for the sewer model, that was calibrated and run on the basis of peak wet weather, basically your five-year rainstorm, about 4.1 inches of rain falling in a time period of about six hours. So, the infrastructure is really broken down into three categories, we observe, well, I should say, condition, we can observe the condition of our assets because we operate it, we see how it's deteriorating, where we have problems. We also have maintenance and repair history, how many times do we repair a pipe in a certain area? And then there's age and inefficiencies, and that pertains primarily to our metering operations. So, I am going to step back and then transition to Google Earth, which has proven to be an invaluable tool.
Tim?
Yes.
Real quick, these cost estimates that you have here, these are 2023?
These are October through Janu, October 2023 through January, we received a final update on some of the bigger core projects, and so these are essentially current costs. They are not projected into the future, so if you look at the bottom of your sheet, and you might see a, a 10-year plan at that last category between the, the bottom dash line and solid, your prices are going to be different than are shown on that map. And so, without trying to project what inflation is, we did our best to reflect current costs.
Tim, I have to excuse myself, I have family commitments that I have to attend to, my wife's birthday, so. I don't think Candy wants to be stated, so.
Yeah, 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 no, 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 keep her happy, sir, keep her happy.
Thanks, Mike.
Please give her our love. Okay, so, I, I'm going to start off with the sewer system, and I am hoping that you are able to see, and I'm going to give a blacker or darker background, so things will pop a little bit better. You see a grid of green lines on the screen, that is our existing sewer gravity system. A customer adjacent to those lines can tie into it, and they will, they should not be under pressure, as some of them are under rainstorms currently, so that sets the, that sets the condition for where we're at. We do have a, a service area that is defined by the state, and it is this larger area, and we occupy or we serve only a small subset of that currently, but we do have the right to provide service in these other locations. So, I'm going to zoom back in and then get started.
Okay, your water CCN does not find out to that sewer CCN, correct?
That's correct, and if I, let me turn water, and I use the same color, because we're going to transition to that, but that darker area there is our water CCN, I'll turn off sewer, so we are bounded on the water side. We don't have much area left to grow beyond where we're at, just since we're talking about water, let me throw that up and turn off our gravity sewers. And so you can see we have a lot better coverage in our service area for water than we do for sewer. Okay, so, let's get back to sewer, and bear with me, and we will start with, let's start with, let's start with our deficiencies here. We talked about the hydraulic modeling that the master plan did, these sewers, turn that on here, so.
Does that show the city limits?
The mo, the model, the, if you want to look at city limits, we'll pop that on briefly, that, those are city limits, and except for a couple places here, our service is currently being provided almost entirely within city limits. We talked about our master, we talked about the master plan using hydraulic models, and it looked at the 2020 condition, and it's been updated to the 20, to the current 2024 condition, based on things that have changed. And without the improvements that are in our capital improvement plan, this is an image that shows the deficiencies in our system. What you have with the yellow dots are places where the sewer system doesn't have enough capacity, the line is pressurized, and wastewater rises within the manhole to within three feet of the ground surface. The red dots are where the model is saying there are sewer overflows that are going to happen, coming out of manholes into the streets, onto the ground, a very unsafe condition, unsanitary condition. What you see with those pink lines, those are basic overlays on top of our sewer system, these represent lines that are pressurized during that five-year design rainstorm. State standards for new design says you need to design your pipes so that you do not have pressurization in your gravity pipes. That purple is showing the degree to which our system is pressurized under storm condition. This is not a good picture, primarily because of the red dots, to some degree because of the yellow. The, the pink lines, or those whitish lines, don't necessarily present a problem that customers would notice, but they can lead to accumulation of more debris and other sewer maintenance problems that our crews have to contend with. So, this is not a, not a good situation. As we've been talking about in town hall meetings, we implement our five-year capital improvement plan for sewer, and this is what happens after that plan is implemented. 98% of all sewer manhole overflows have been addressed, the vast majority of those, what we're calling severe surcharge. And many of those surcharged pipelines are being tackled. And so I'll toggle that so you can see exactly how significant that change is. So that illustrates the benefit of what we're doing.
So under that, I'm looking at this chart, right? Is that, when you say five-year plan, is that the long delay five-year, the moderate delay five-year, or the on-time five-year?
If we, if we look at the projects that are in the on-time below the moderate delay, you have a number of projects here that, a lot of them are rehabilitation, the 30, number 31 and 2, those are basically extensions into new portions where we don't have existing issues, that's brand-new infrastructure.
So you're saying that if we do the on-time five-year plan, that's where we take care of the majority of the yellow and red dots?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
It's, it's close. So I want to point out project 25 and 26. 2025 is actually included in this model output, so 25 is necessary. It's a relatively small project of about $500,000 up on, up near Morgan Boulevard. That's a relatively short upsizing, and we did include that because that's where some of the overflows would be. And I would suggest that that actually be at least within the moderate delay plan. The other project, number 25.
Where would you kick that, or do you just include it?
I would, I would just, I would move it up. What we can do here, well, let me, I'll get back to that question in just a second. The project number 25 is a project on Morgan Boulevard. And when I got here, our sewer department said we want to tackle and replace that line. It's not in great shape, it's kind of a double-barrel clay pipeline. And from what I understand, the city's talking about a major drainage project on that same section of road. It's not a very wide road, but if the city's going to do a big box project, I think it would be, make all the sense in the world while that road is torn up to come in with this project. It's not a master plan project, but I would point out.
Target of opportunity.
It's a, it's an opportunity for sure. This is basically the area we're talking about on West Avenue. And these are two pipelines that flow to the south toward that same line. If we improve and upgrade Morgan, you will see substantial improvement in the surcharging in these two lines, and it very well may be that these two, two of our six remaining overflow manholes may be addressed if we do Morgan.
But that's Commerce, the street you're showing is Commerce.
Well, actually Commerce is on this side, and then there is a road on this side called West Street.
Oh.
Commerce is over here.
It is, okay.
And, and this, you can, you can even see some double lines where you've even got, you know, a three-way going on here. And it's, it's a problematic maintenance issue. And so if the city is going to do a project, we would like to coordinate with that. And we placed Morgan here on the list, I don't know when the city's timeline is, whether it's in five years or 10?
So it's Commerce, and I guess you mentioned Morgan, Morgan is.
I'm sorry, I meant West.
Fastest time. West, West Commerce, right, yeah. We applied for grants for that project.
Let's get your mic, please.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Luis Vargas, city engineer for the record, hi, Tim. So yes, that, that's a huge project, a drainage project. That is, it's a preliminary project because it hasn't been designed yet, and we're barely applying for grants to get all the efforts done, right, design and construction, right? But if that project happens, it's, it's a great opportunity for joining efforts of, you know, bringing sewer or even water, right, in that same avenue. So.
So I would say that where it sits on the plan may be a good spot, but if those grants come forward and you want to do it in a couple of years, we're going to need to move this project up. If you don't do it within the next five and it's 10 years out, I think our election in that case would be perhaps to delay that project. But it's one that's out there that's contingent on other things happening. Okay, so to get back to the original question, I would direct your attention to the, okay, so this is a page, and I know it's not zoomed in very well here, but.
So Tim, just to be, to, for clarification purposes, that number 25 or, would be on the on-time or moderate delay? Either one depending on the city, is that what you're saying?
West Street, I think, would be flexible depending. I would, I would certainly say that Morgan should be, should be moved up because there are some overflow manholes that can be eliminated during that design storm. So almost everything that you, that you saw.
So Tim, is it 25 or 26? Is it West Street or Morgan Boulevard that you would have on either plan?
It is, it is prioritized project number 26, this one right here. West Street, and I think I probably used Morgan in place of West a few times, I apologize for that.
So this is the 4.2 million dollar project?
It is a 4. That is right west, but Morgan is the 545,000. And this is one that I think we probably should move up. But we may be able to do that because of one of these other funds that I'll talk about in just the very next section. Okay, so if we start off at the very top, you do have a prioritized number, and there's nothing sacred about this other than our master plan has come up with a basic scheme, and you have to do some projects before others because they flow into, you can't up, you cannot improve an upstream project and have it discharge into an unimproved downstream project that doesn't have enough capacity. You make it, that problem worse than it was to start with. So one of the projects that appears as number 24 in the master plan is not a reflection of its priority. This is an addition that we asked to be included. It is a line item for local sewer participation and sponsorship. And so we, in our budgets annually allocate, the board approves, a $5,000, $500,000 allocation toward this type of project. And over a five-year period, that's a $2.5 million total. What local sewer participation means is when a developer comes in and wants to do a subdivision, they have the obligation to extend sewer service. But they only have to extend the minimum size at the minimum depth that would be necessary to serve that project. If Waterworks has a master plan need, we want that to extend further beyond, or it's in the same alignment as a master plan project, we can participate in that project by state code, up to 30% of the cost of public improvements. And that allows us to pay the increase in cost to make that a bigger pipe at a deeper depth, if necessary. And so we set aside funds if a project doesn't come through, and I think in most years, we don't have participation projects, but we have them every three or four years. We set aside funds so that we can participate in the project and achieve a master plan purpose, allowing the developer to pay their share on that cost. The sponsorship component is, is just a name that we've added to that to identify if there is a local improvement that would have some benefit, then we could potentially use that $500,000 budget to fund that type of project. So when we talk about some of these extensions to areas that have septic tanks, and we don't have a participation cost, then we could perhaps allocate some of that funding toward that kind of a project. So it's, it's a bucket of funds that isn't necessarily going to be used, but it could be, and we budget for that annually.
So do you, when you don't use it in one year, does that, those funds roll over and it continues to increase? Or you're saying if it's not used, you like user, lose it, and you only allocate the same amount annually?
Our sewer fund is one sewer fund, so if it's not used, it just remains in balance. So we don't separately account for the accumulation or the unused portion of this line item.
Wouldn't we have that balance debt?
Well, I mean, it's, it's our total, it's our total fund, right? And so there's not a specific identification of here's the leftover from the last five years. We don't, we don't account for it that way. But. I don't have the tally for sewer. So. So, okay, so that covers that. This is, this is an allocation, this is not a defined plan. And so we wanted to represent for, in our capital improvement plan, something that if we did have consecutive years where we're using that money, we want the rate plan to provide the funds necessary to fund that. And so that's why, yeah, we don't normally see that, but it is a contingency. Annual manhole rehabilitation, we go through, we have manholes that fail. Let me go ahead and show that next slide that I previewed earlier. We have some of our manholes are concrete on the left, not, not a good material for corrosive sewer environments. It corrodes on Haverford. We had a concrete manhole where the sewer gas at the very bottom had corroded the entire wall. And soils had come down through that hole, and a police officer was driving by and noticed a hole near a manhole. And when we went to investigate, there was an enormous cavity, very fortunate that there was no collapse. So we have to take care of problems like this. The material of construction that we prefer is fiberglass, it's very resistant to hydrogen sulfide and the sulfuric acid that's generated as part of that environment. So we have a process, a local contractor does a lot of work around the state, and they rehab these kind of manholes, they clean it up, they put a liner around the inside to reinforce it structurally, and it has a corrosion-resistant barrier so you don't encounter this kind of problem. It saves the effort of having to dig this huge hole, like we did on Haverford, to replace a manhole, if we can replace, if we can rehab it from the inside. And maybe that'll last 20 years, but that's a better investment than a bigger cost. We even have wood shingles like the, like the case on the right. This is more likely going to be a manhole that would have to be totally replaced as opposed to rehabbed. But it's an example of the condition that manholes can, can be found. We allocate $300,000 per year for that, and we've been, we've been pretty good about spending that every year. So that is a relatively good number that's consistent. The next project is sewer renewal replacement priority package number two. This is a project currently underway. This is being funded through the ARPA funds that the city committed to Harlingen Waterworks. There will be some balance left over that we think we're going to allocate toward our manhole rehabilitation, and that will consume all of the ARPA award to Waterworks. So that project is in process in the current budget year, 3.9 million. I think this may actually spill a little bit into 2025.
How much of the ARPA is going back into the manhole rehabilitation?
I don't have that exact number. We had a really large credit change order on the package number one, so there will be some balance remaining. $500,000 maybe, I can't say for sure, but it'll be on that order.
And is that how that works? Gabe, the, the money is allocated for a specific purpose, and then it can be used for something else?
He gave us a list of projects that the staff in the commission meeting we had. So what he does is he submits embosses to the city, and then finance goes through them to make sure they pertain to that particular project. Now, the one thing we don't, and I told him this, we're not going to be paying for it, it's only for construction. That's what we're going to pay for construction.
So I think for compliance purposes, you might need to work with the city on that if there's money that is being.
We, we identified a series of projects, including that renewal project, but manhole rehabilitation was also one of those projects that we presented that the city approved. So it's already, we can already use it for that purpose.
He had planned to have about $10 million worth of projects, and we only gave him about 7.3.
Three?
So.
7.7.
Can we ask a question about ARPA?
So I think that, so I think that the, the projects that he may have presented were about $10 million. So you just have some $20 million for those.
Okay.
We continue, the ones that he presented to the city.
Okay, that's, okay, I apologize, go ahead.
So this priority package number two you see up here, I, I threw on the road so that you can get your bearings, and I think it'll be easier if I turn that back off. But you see these purple lines, these are those different sites where our wastewater crews have identified habitual problems, where we have repeat visits, we're talking about fractured clay sewer pipe. I think this is a good, this slide here shows you an image that we took with our sewer camera inside an actual pipe in our system, heavily fractured. Typically, the soils are moving in this condition, many clay sewer pipes in our system are like this. This has been replaced as part of that renewal package, and we need to continue to do that to resolve those kinds of problems. The next project we have on the list, and I'm not going to mention the cost, I'm just going to move quickly through these as I might.
Can I ask you something real quick?
Sure.
Your, your on-time five-year cost projections, is that still 258 million?
We did have an update to the cost, so it may be somewhere around 257, 256, it's real close to 258, yes. So, okay, the next project we have is lift station five upgrade and outfall sewer upsizing. This is a master plan project that was scheduled a little bit later. But because of some development pressure over here along Paso Real, we asked that developer to pay a pro-rata share, and they've done so. We've ordered materials, and we've been attempting to obtain an easement to build the new lift station now for about 18 months. So materials are waiting in the yard, we're ready to start this project. We, we believe this is going to get started here in the next, next couple of months.
That easement should be acquired by the end of the month. We have a date served for that.
Good.
It's in Houston, too. I know some people, some of the people here want to know more about 21, the possibility of 21.
And we, and we're going to get there. So, I mean, we can jump around, or we can do this sequentially, whichever commissioner would like. I think it might, I mean, I'm.
Plow through it.
Okay, let's plow through it. Okay, lift station five, we're getting ready to do that, Hand Road. We do have, part of the sewer problem that we have, we have this manifold force main into which many different lift stations pump. And these lift stations compete with each other, this is just a nightmare of an operation. This pipeline, this manifold force main is 16 inches, it approaches Wilson Road, and then it transitions to a 12-inch. That's only about 54% of the capacity of a 16-inch line, so we want to upgrade that.
Isn't part of that county as well?
It's right on the edge.
Yeah, because I want to say my neighborhood, there's some Roosevelt and the Hand.
Ah, and you are.
I know that portion of Roosevelt turns into Cali Road. But we service them anyways, all that area.
Everything that you see here in that black outline is our service area, we can't go outside that. So the next project here, we have added to this list, let me turn off that manifold force main, is an extension that Commissioner Bettis had requested. Had a small meeting, town hall meeting over at Waterworks about nine, 10, nine to 12 months ago. Sunrise Boulevard is a road right off of Stewart Place, there's an existing sewer here, this could be an extension, there's ready access. This project is $422,000, and we think instead of, I want to clarify, that 422 is actually coming out of the first project number one, local sewer participation and sponsorship. Rather than adding and doubling that money, we think it's very likely that we're going to have funds available to do that if the board and the commission so, so direct. So we've included that in our mask, in our, our capital improvement plan. The next project we have here would be lift station 59. This is a lift station that's, that's near the sports complex. It, it, it's a failing lift station, it needs to be replaced, a little bit of a capacity upgrade. We now have a design, this will be constructed in-house. The next project we have is lift station 33, another project that is motivated primarily because of a very poor, failing wet well. I think that might be a concrete wet well, and I'm getting nodged, so concrete does not fare well in a sewer environment. We have a design that is now underway for this, and this would also be an in-house construction project. Moving on to, and I'm going to go ahead and click this next whole set of projects. And it's this group in here, starting at the wastewater treatment plant. We do have some deficiencies at the head end of that plant, we need a bigger, deeper lift station. We need to move our screening and our grit removal out of the existing structure and create a dedicated structure to do that better. And this green rectangle is an equalization basin, so that as more flow comes to the plant, we can set it. plant, we can set it aside without having to upgrade and supersize our treatment plant, and then when flows subside, we bring that stored flow back in. It's essentially a detention pond for sewer, and it's a good way to minimize costs and expenses at the treatment plant. We have to do this to get to the depth that we need, and it also needs to be deeper, so we don't surcharge the line. This next portion, I'm going to go stepwise. So here's the treatment plant, this is the Little Creek Interceptor. It is the main trunk, main pipeline through which most of the flow in our system is conveyed to the wastewater treatment plant. This is a complete replacement, upgrading its capacity with greater depth. There are 30 inches in some places in diameter, 36, I believe, in the part that goes through the old landfill. This would probably be a 54-inch pipeline. It is the core infrastructure that we need to build, there's some other projects here that are attached to it. I'm sorry, I've gone too far with that. Okay, that's the Little Creek. This is a sewer extension that eliminates an existing lift station at our old, no longer used treatment plant over on Taft. We think that this entire project, this pipeline project, would be built by one contact tractor, that would be the most effective. Features of these, of this big interceptor project, we are eliminating three lift stations, and so there is a maintenance issue that is removed, and it is reliable. If there's a power outage and you have a gravity system, gravity's going to keep working even if the power isn't out, and so that's a major advantage of getting rid of lift stations using gravity trunk lines. As you'll note, this total interceptor is about $50,000 to $51 million in projected cost, but it is the heart and the core of what we're trying to do with our sewer system.
11 and 12.
Correct, correct. I think I might have skipped one. Did I not? I think I did, I skipped this one up here. This is Lift Station 76, and in our master plan, we initially thought we'll just put bigger pumps in there, because this is a location that will overflow. If we do not go out among our 62 different lift stations and turn some of them off to relieve the potential for overflow or minimize the overflow in the vicinity of Lift Station 76. It does serve a local area, but we can't overflow these customers, so we turn off some of these other lift stations out in the west. But you can't do that forever, so you have to turn them back on, and you turn others off. That's an extraordinary effort, far, far below the state standard. So we have a project with 76, and as we've gotten into that, we've understood we need to replace that lift station at a greater depth. We need to increase its capacity by two and a half to three times what it can currently pump. The existing force main would blow apart if we tried to put that much flow at those kind of pressures, so we're going to be installing a, or proposing a parallel force main to go alongside the existing force main that delivers it off of Grimes and Bob Uker, just directly north of the treatment plant. Very important project, we are currently in design on this project, and we think that perhaps it would bid sometime in the latter part of 2020, mid-2025. This is a line, and as we had talked about with this western manifold, all of this flow out here in the west, except for this area right near the mall area, flows through this force main to Lift Station 75. It gets repumped over to 76, and 76 then repumps it. There's additional flow up here that, from the local area, that also flows into 76. So when you look at a project and you say, well, it's way over here, this has no benefit to the west, well, yes, it does. This is serving all of these customers and all of this system over here on the west.
And through that, it all works in Eastfield.
And that, and that is correct. Combs and Primera also flow into that lift station. In the long run, all of this west flow is called to go to a new treatment plant on the southwest, and so this flow direction won't happen. And this line here then will be dedicated primarily to our wholesale customers in Combs and Primera. Okay, so we've covered that now. Lift Station Nine is an upgrade of an existing lift station. A lot of the red and yellow dots that you saw in this area are going to be alleviated because of this project. We do have to cross the Arroyo, we would be going through existing excavated or paved trails here, so that would involve minimal impact to what's going on with the thicket. We will be doing, we will certainly have to consider some environmental studies to go along with this project, and that could take some time. Okay, project number, the next project on our list is WW9, which is Lift Station 19 Elimination. This is a lift station that is not deep enough, and it causes extensive surcharging even when it's not a big storm. This lift station would need to be upgraded significantly, but then it discharges through a short fourth main to a gravity line on Ninth Street. And so rather than tearing up the road, putting in a short gravity line, we decided it would be more beneficial to eliminate that lift station and just stay deeper with that line on Ninth Street, eliminate 19 and all the problems associated with that area, and then the reliability is much better than if you have a lift station.
So just put in another pipe and just drop the lower overflow.
Yes, a bigger, right now it's an 18-inch, that needs to go to a 30-inch pipe. That's a big project, and it will be, involve a lot of disruption, and that's why the $13 million cost associated with this project. But when you look at a lot of these problems that we talked about before with, you can see where that pipeline is going, it's going to the heart of this red mess, and that's solving this big problem here. And all, and there's surcharging on this line as well, so an important project. We also have Lift Station 20 Elimination Sewer, that's another lift station that would be eliminated by virtue of a gravity line, and that cost is not insignificant, but this can be done not in the street. There's a trail here that we potentially will go down. So this, right here on the map, is the sum total of what we are calling the Long Delay Sewer Plan. The additional projects here under the moderate delay include Lamb Avenue Trunk Sewer.
So, just so I understand.
Sure.
That line, the long delay line should have been dropped. It's right now between 16 and 17, it should be between 18 and 19. That's a typo? Mistake on, correct?
I, I am then mistaken, so what I need to do...
Because the long delay should be dropped, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm mistaken. I should have, let me, correct, correct.
Yeah, so it's supposed to be, yeah, between 18 and 19, that's what it's...
That mistake on my part. So these two projects right here, let me get my bearings, these two right here, I'm going to have to move down, my air. These two projects are actually in the moderate delay and not in the long delay as I have structured this here, so...
17 and 18?
Correct, 17 and 18. They're shown correctly on the sheet, I just presented them...
Okay, so they are where they're supposed to be?
They're where they should be, I just presented them out of, out of order, so. So basically, that Lift Station 19 Elimination, Lift Station 20 Elimination are part of the first two projects on the moderate delay plan.
Okay.
So we've covered the purpose of that, now we've got straight where it belongs. This next project is Lamb Avenue Trunk Sewer.
These two, but 17 and 18 are like so crucial, because it takes up, it alleviates the whole like library area, like all the red and yellow, all the library...
I would agree with that.
So then, in my mind, they should be part, well, either way, right? It should be in the long delay, okay.
So, related to that discussion, there, our master plan assumed a one and a half percent growth, assuming growth in certain areas, and that's based off of planning data and some subdivisions that were coming. What we've seen in the last two years is a rash of multifamily development here on South Ed Carey. And developer had a contractor who did something that caused an overflow situation, wasn't because of the system, but they questioned, well, we don't have enough flow in our system. Well, it was a positive step back and say, what did our master plan really contemplate? And we've got all these new high-density, large-flow, volume projects, we asked our consultant to update and tell us, is our sewer system going to be able to handle this? And they came back and they said, yes, barely, but you're a yellow dot on that, on that sheet. You're within inches of overflow during a design rainstorm. Their recommendation was that we consider not adding any additional flow to this existing line, which follows in this territory here, as I'm marking that out. It is important, if growth is to continue in this area, to solve that problem. One piece of that is Lift Station Number Nine. If we improve that, deepen it, that system will drain out better, it will be able to remove flow better, and that will have upstream effects all the way to Ed Carey. What Lamb Avenue Sewer does is it completely eliminates that surcharging and provides the capacity for even further growth in that area. So that's why Lift Station Nine was in the long delay, not in the moderate, because it solves this immediate problem. We're already living with Lift Station 19 and 20 problems, and that may not be acceptable either, but just an explanation of why projects appear where they do on this scheme. So Lamb Avenue, important...
Commissioner, because that area's going to have growth continuing, and so the way you stop from having sewer into the system is you stop growth, and that's something you can't do.
Yeah, no, absolutely not. Absolutely, I completely agree with you.
So we wanted to get Lift Station Nine prioritized before 19 and 20, but you could make an argument, those are just as important or more, so I don't really, can't really debate that point too much.
But they're not in the long delay?
Yeah, 17 and 18 are not in the long delay.
They are not, as it's currently drawn, that's correct.
And is there, is there a way for them to be, in terms of priority, or that's the absolute, I mean, I understand that you prioritize them.
Well, the problem here is, is that you look at all the red text here, all those red projects that are not yet in design. All the other ones above it are, to some degree, in design.
Okay.
You have to start here at the treatment plant, and you have to build all this downstream capacity, Little Creek Interceptor and Lift Station Nine, before you can get to the south. You have to build Little Creek Interceptor, you don't necessarily have to get down to Lift Station Nine, but you need that Little Creek Interceptor to be able to do Lift Station 19 Elimination and 20, so it's, there's a, there's a process and a prerequisite sequence here. The next project to talk about, and I think I missed, I would go back up, I did mention a future wastewater treatment plant, that is number seven on the list. That's a $2.5 million acquisition that we're currently working on. That is not in our 20-year plan, but our master plan is forward-looking to say, where do pipes need to point over the long term? And the plan is for the west to eventually be sewed and served by a treatment plant on the west side. Otherwise, we would have to keep replacing and upgrading Little Creek Interceptor and keep upgrading this treatment plant. That doesn't make a lot of sense, there's not much territory to do that, and so we really need to look at a, at something in this area down here for a new plant, and...
Question on the possible western sewer plant, where would the effluent flow?
It would flow to the Arroyo Colorado, just as our current...
Would it be a pipe south?
It would be a pipe south.
Or it would be southeast pipe?
But...
Would it be one of the south pipe or southeast of pipe to drain and...
Right. It would, it would be in the Dixieland area, and it would flow into the Arroyo Colorado somewhere in this reach right in here.
It wouldn't, you wouldn't put the effluent into the system to the parent water?
No, no, yeah. Otherwise, you need all the pipes to carry that, so we, that's what we're trying to avoid.
We already acquired the land for this?
We're working on that.
One second.
We are working on that, we have appraisals, and costs have certainly increased, but we have an attorney, another attorney helping us with that process.
Would it serve a lot of people on the west southwest side?
It would, it would. And so as we talk here on the next project, Dixieland Lift Station Enforce Main, number 20, correct. This is a master plan project that is fulfilling a need to begin establishing a foundation for sewer service in the southwest. If you will notice, this is an image showing our service area, and it goes below, you know, much further south from the Arroyo Colorado, but pretty much south of Garrett, there is no existing sewer system capacity. All these customers, about 3,500, 4,000 customers are currently served by septic systems. And there is, zooming in, a substantial amount of infill that can happen, 400 acres of contiguous property that may be developed. Do you want that all to go onto a septic system? Or, we thought, in working through the master plan, the idea was that this would be a lift station, a force main to serve as the anchor to get us started with extensions in the southwest. And then beyond 20 years, then you could start, and in the intervening period, new developers can still have some access to get over to that location. But ultimately, that ends up becoming what is, would be the future treatment plant, and so this is kind of a focal point of that long, long-term master planning effort. So, for the near term, in the five-year plan, this is a lift station with 1.5 million gallon per day peak capacity, a force main extension, and then dumping off into a sewer line that has the capacity to convey it over to Lift Station Nine. And that's one of the reasons why Nine has to be upgraded to the extent that it is. Ultimately, if a treatment plant is built in this area, this force main would be done away with, you'd probably need a new lift station, but you're anchored now to that location. And so you want your pipes to start pointing in that direction, and so that begins to set the precedent for that. Okay. Then, also in our moderate delay plan is an upgrade of Lift Station 55, which is in this location?
Are you past?
I did. Well, I didn't intend to do that.
All these people are here for 21.
To get lynched.
You cannot skip that one.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Already in slip.
Yeah, those letters are so small.
He's already popped his head over like...
All right, well, so much for my success here tonight. So, so the, the problem, the problem with the southwest right now is we don't have a place to put the flow. I mean, there's a question of who pays for that kind of an improvement, but where do you put the flow? We can't answer that question right now. With the implementation of those downstream projects, including Dixieland, Lift Station Enforce Main, then we can contemplate extensions on Tucker Road, potentially up to Brianna Circle. Further north, there does seem to be some additional development potential in here. We have priced that out at a cost of about $1.9 million. And so for the customers that this would serve, the cost per connection to serve, to implement this project is about $50,000 per connection.
Also, that's fifty grand per project.
Well, I mean, we can, we'll get in, and I do have a slide for this, I not mean to avoid this.
But that's not, okay, that's like implementing it to the system currently, if the wastewater station's built out there in the next five to seven years, it's not going to cost $50,000, okay?
Everything you see in that orange line, that, that cost per connection is $50,000. Not Dixieland Lift Station Enforce Main, that's not included in that number, that's just that orange pipeline.
But once we build a septic system out there, a wastewater system, that's going to knock that cost way down.
You're still, you're still going to be relatively near that number. You're going to be on the order of $50,000.
Is, is there some grant money from Texas Water and Water Board or grant money somewhere? Because it's hard to service 25, 30, 30 homes only, at 50 grand a connection, that's too like, basically too many dollars. And that's a lot of money, and that's, that's requiring everybody, the city of Harlingen, to have a rate increase to pay for that, there's got to be another way to fund that.
There is funding, we go to the state and the legislature.
Let's keep that, let's keep it within the commission board.
Yeah, the, the...
You know, I don't know, there are other funding avenues, but I mean...
There generally are not. Water Development Board has an economically distressed areas program, this is not an economic, this would never qualify for that. It, it would not, if there were, well, there are other things, you can establish a nuisance determination, and perhaps you might get, you know, a loan that might be subsidized or lower interest to do that, but this is, grant funding for this, in my assessment, is going to be next to impossible unless there's some other program that magically appears that we don't know about yet, but under existing programs that the Water Development Board has, this would not be eligible for any kind of grant funding.
But basically, because our whole, like, county, because we're along the river, we're like concerned, like, our whole county's kind of like a colonial, like, area, therefore...
like considered like, our whole county is kind of like a colonial, like, area, therefore aren't we all considered low?
No, the Water Development Board, for, you know, for the purpose of their funding, they look at census block data, and so you have to put in the information about your census block. And these homes, they're, they're nice homes. And they're not going to be in that threshold where the median household income is going to be low enough. It may actually be over that threshold in this area. I would expect that to be the case.
Why are there septic tanks failing in that area? I mean, I'm confused because the county's restricted on septic systems. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to add that, you know, you got to look at, this isn't something that just occurred overnight. And I'll say that Tim and myself and City Management and actually these two commissioners, we went out to Austin, and we've been trying to lobby for that exact change. And Tim is absolutely right. It's unfortunate that, you know, depending on where you live and the way they draw these blocks, it, it puts it as a disadvantage, at a disadvantage. And that changed because another community changed it way back when, right? Is to be able to accommodate what was needed at that time. And so we're looking, and hopefully we can make those changes, because I would argue that our community, when you're looking at the state of Texas, there's nowhere in the Rio Grande Valley that I would say is, you know, affluent as opposed to areas, say, in Plano or, you know.
West University, right?
Yes. And so, so I think that, you know, we need to educate our delegation on how important this is. And so that is something that we're going to continue to do. But I don't think that that was something that the City of Harlingen was doing prior. And I think that prior to that, we had never asked for money from the Texas Water Development Board. So the fact that we got ten million and that, and all of the work that, that Tim has been doing is, is a step in the right direction, and we're looking, you know, for, in, you know, to improve. But I think what would be helpful here, Tim, especially for all the folks that are here, is to explain in, in just simple terms, and I say that for me, not for y'all, just so you know, in, in terms of why is it that we can't tackle this problem right now? And I know we talk about this all the time, but I think it's important for those that are listening at home and those that are here to understand why, even though this is a priority for the city, that we can't go tomorrow and fix it. So can you, can you explain that?
Sure. And I have a, I have a slide here to talk through some considerations, but I think to answer your question about why it can't be done now, there is, aside from the question of how you're going to pay for it, let's set that aside, what do you do with that wastewater? You have to send it to somewhere, and you want to send it somewhere that's not already overloaded. Yes, you could, you could put in a lift station and send it to an overloaded system and move that, your problem, to somebody else and overflow those downstream areas. The extent to which that would happen, and we, we don't have hydraulic modeling yet to predict that, but to say that we want to establish a foundation for sewer where you can put new additional flow that helps eliminate septic systems, we're basically starting over at this location of town right over here, and you've got to build all this infrastructure down through Lift Station Number Nine. You don't have to do Lamb as part of that. You also have to do Lift Station, Dixieland Lift Station and that force main, and then you can begin extending. If you choose any other path, you're going to be overloading somebody else and creating a bigger problem downstream. If you do it in the right sequence, you can avoid those consequences. So we are showing this in the moderate delay plan happening within the first five years. So that is feasible, but you have to do those other projects that are downstream first in order. Otherwise, you're going to transfer your problem and make it much, much worse for somebody else.
So if we were to approve everything this year and then do it in the order you're saying, when would be the soonest we could even get to Brianna Circle?
I would think.
Year-wise, because they always have to design everything, and then you guys got to build it, right?
Well, if you look on the, on your sheet, you do have an obligation year, and so all the red projects, I think we would start issuing design contracts and start that this year. And then you have construction, and those are the obligation years. So if we're looking at Dixieland, we're talking about sometime around 2027, and that's, that, that's your best-case scenario, 2027. You are issuing, or you're going out for bids, you're issuing bonds, hopefully through the Water Development Board to do that project. And so, say, a year of construction, maybe by the end of 2028, you might get there. There's, there are environmental studies that have to be done, and that pipeline is cutting across areas that the EPA is probably going to want environmental impact documents. So the sooner, the sooner we get into design, the quicker we can get that process started. But there is a sequence of events, and a lot of things have to go as they need to go. We think they can. We would need to take some pretty extraordinary measures on our side to execute at that, at that pace, but within five years, that is, it is a possibility. It may take a year or two longer than that. I'm not here to make any guarantees, but this is our best assessment in a relatively best-case scenario.
Well, this, well, I can't hear my voice, we have this thing on. So in essence, because the reason I asked some of you guys, some of y'all to come, because I know last time we had meetings, and you guys were asking for dates, and we couldn't give you anything. We're, and then some of, some of your neighbors were, got all frustrated because they're like, you told me twenty years, thirty years, I'm going to die before then. But here, this is the first step. So we're getting there, we're giving you a timeframe, more or less, like, look, you have something to look forward to. It's like, like Tim said, it's not going to be something that's immediately done, because you have, there's all these other steps that we have to go, but this is the first step. So you're looking at something like Tim said, maybe five, six years, and that's if everything goes right. But the thing is, you're on the, you're on there now. Okay, before you weren't, now you are. So this is something that's coming, but it, there is going to have to, there is a lot of things that are going to go into it, but it's coming. So that's why I wanted you guys to see this, because I want you to see that, you know, we are, we are, we are aware. Like, you guys have messaged me and called me before, we've had the means, like I said earlier, and I'm aware of this, but now what I wanted to do is I want these, everyone else, I wanted the water, our commission, plus I wanted the Water Works Board too, for them to understand that, yes, these numbers are right, and it's money and stuff like that, but it's like, money is a big issue, it is. But at the same time, there's the people factoring it too. I wanted them to see how it affects each and every single one of you. And I think by you guys being here and showing that, that, hey, it affects us, it's a real person behind these numbers, I think that's a good thing. But more importantly, there's a timeframe now. Okay? Before there wasn't, now there is. So I'm hoping that, that will help you, you know, ease some of the frustration that I know you guys feel over there, and whenever it rains. But, you know, and please, share this with your neighbors, because I know all of you are a close-knit community, you guys talk to each other. So share the same, like, you know what, we are aware of it, we're working on it, and it's coming. But there's just a few steps that we have to go before we get there, but it's coming.
And is that also the lift station?
So we need to keep the, I'm sorry, but we do need to keep it within the commission and the board.
Steve, if I could answer your question about septic tanks. So we do not live in the Rio Grande Valley. We live in the Rio Grande Delta. And our soil is mostly clay. It's the Rocky Mountains from Colorado south. It's paleolithic. It's ancient clay particles that have washed down over the last few hundred million years. And clay is like a sponge. It absorbs water and it expands and droughts. All the water goes out and it compresses. And so this, we're at forty-two feet elevation, and water rolls west to east in the valley. It doesn't roll into the Arroyo, it doesn't roll into the river. So that when it heavy rains, the water has seventeen miles to go and forty-two feet high, seventeen miles to the Laguna Madre. It's zero. And so the water doesn't drain, and the, the clay picks it up. It all explodes like billions and trillions of sponges, and then the water that goes into this septic tank can't drain out into the soil because the soil is super saturated.
Oh, no, the county had gone to actually requiring dual septic tanks when you do installations. Now, that just won't double. So you don't have to pump them every year, pump, you pump them every few years, but they're requiring dual. And, and the, the light rail is, is what it is by, you know, by, by the city, the county's design, but, you know, dual tanks make it a lot better. Again, I live in town.
And I'll, and I'll just add again that, you know, a lot of these problems, these predate, and, and there's nothing that we can do to go back to make those improvement. I mean, I wish that my neighborhood that was annexed and is now, is part of the city, that we were given sewer and, and we're on septic. And so I think that those were bad decisions back then to say, okay, we're going to annex, but we're not going to give you any services. And I think that that's what a lot of the folks in, in District Five feel, because we're kind of a rural type of community, even though you're within the city. But, but unfortunately, we can't, you know, we can, we can, you know, point fingers and blame and all that good stuff, but, you know, that, that's not going, that's not going to be productive. So we need to move forward on how we can fix it. And having said that, you know, I think that the folks in the room hopefully understand that we have to go through these steps before we can get there. And even if we were given a blank check, we couldn't fix it tomorrow, even if we wanted to, you'd have to go through these steps first. However, is there anything that can be done, and you might not have that answer today, but is there anything that can be done in the interim to give them some kind of relief? Because the type of, I mean, that's just not acceptable to be living in this community and not being able to use the restroom, not being able to flush the toilet, take a bath. Those things are really serious, and, and when we're asking them to, to wait until 2028 to do that, that's going to create a lot of anxiety and frustration. And I want, if there is something that can be done to provide temporary relief in, in whatever fashion, I don't know, and you're the expert for that, I think that's a conversation that we need to, we need to have. And if you don't have those answers, I understand, but I think we need to talk about that.
You have to get the.
Let me just jump right in. I know we're going south, and I think that's good, because eventually we're going to have development to the south, that all areas blowing up, Dixieland, you did the whole connection, the south, what they call it, the South Connector Road. But can't we just go north? Like, so you have, like, the Brianna Circle area, can't they go north from Brianna Circle, I guess Tucker or whatever road that is? Then you hit Garrett, Garrett, you hook a right, you hit Dixieland, and there's a big subdivision right there, isn't there? And then, isn't there also a neighborhood like right north of Brianna Circle that has, like, sewer? Well, I'm just saying, like, instead of going like the long way around, can we just go north and do like a quick patch, right? Maybe it's not the ideal patch.
Right. That's, that's exactly the problem is if, and, and we priced this out at one point in time about three years ago and came up with a cost estimate that, because costs were much lower three years ago, we had this going north and saying, yes, the ultimate master plan is coming down here. The problem is, you are going to be sending that to a really shallow line where you have existing flows and a lift station that's going to continue, you're going to continue making that downstream problem worse. You can, you can do that, you can do that. You can, you can hook a pipe up.
Just so we can see exactly.
Yeah, you can, you can hook a pipe up and try and send it over here, but you're going to, you're going to cause a big problem for these folks.
Okay, so that's already at capacity as well?
Right. And so, I mean, that, that has to go somewhere. And so that whole system feeds to a lift station that is in this, you got twelve, you got eleven. This is, this would not be a good location, because you're only two or three feet deep, very high probability for an overflow. So we would, when we were looking at alternatives, we thought, well, we would come up further to the north and then, and then maybe tie into perhaps this line, and then let that proceed on toward Lift Station Twelve, and then that pumps over, and then eleven. Well, eleven, guess where that goes? That ends up over here at Little Creek Interceptor, which is already, we've established is overloaded. So you're taking that problem, I mean, if it's one house, no big deal, but if you start having, you know, dozens of homes that are connecting, I mean, it's in degrees, I mean, it's not going to, you know, cause geysers of sewer, but you increase your risk and your potential for overflows in a system that's already overloaded. Not in the dry summer. It doesn't happen in, you know, the dry summer of 2023, but when you get a rain like we did in 2018, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, that's going to be a problem for people downstream. And so the only way to make that happen is if, if, if the board commissioner willing to live with the compromises and the additional downstream impact that that flow would have. To avoid inconveniencing or making somebody else's problem worse, you wait for that master plan so that you're not, you, you are providing all the capacity you need without further surcharging or making somebody else's problem worse.
You'd still have to come back and do the rest of it anyway.
Yeah. And if I repeat myself, meeting after meeting, you have to obey the laws of hydrology. And whether it's me in karst hydrology or it's here in the valley, hydrology is hydrology. And water flows downhill, and sewage flows downhill. And you have to fix everything downhill and work uphill in order for the whole system to work. And all that takes is a couple hundred million dollars in four to eight years.
So, Tim, I know that the economically distressed.
E-DAP.
E-DAP, when we're doing those census blocks, that, that, you know, that prevents us from getting additional funds for this project, but isn't there that nuisance exception? And wouldn't this fall under that? I would consider it.
Even if you have a nuisance determination, that's where I think that maybe because of that, you could get some rating points in the regular SRF program, but because it's not economically disadvantaged, you're not going to get free money. You might get low-interest loan money, but not free money.
So what about all of the things that need to be done prior to, like?
Those are situated and, and, you know.
None of them are in the.
They are in less economically advantaged areas, and we think, as a matter of fact, the E-DAP program is indeed, is indeed, I mean, that, that loan we talked about would be paying for these yellow pipelines in the treatment plant work to some degree, not, not in total, but. So those, when we applied in 2022, those served economically disadvantaged areas. But when you start talking about an extension to an area that's not disadvantaged, that's not going to be an eligible portion of your project.
We have money here in town over here. Right? For A, for B, first, then, or C.
Let's, let's, let's keep it right here.
So, so I, good.
Second question. Does this mean a more frequent servicing of the septic tank in, in the form of cleaning it out or?
I'm trying to see if there's something that we can do in the interim to have some kind of relief for these.
And if you could get all the homes in that area on the same schedule? And you run through and you, you have oversimplification or?
Well, the fundamental problem is, is that the, the septic system and the soils that they're installed, even if you have a big tank, that tank's going to fill up very quickly. Septic systems depend on the leach field. And so if you were to clean out a septic, you basically have a cesspool. I mean, you're talking about a cesspool situation, and you're pumping out a relatively small volume, very, very frequently, you know, once a week, maybe, maybe more frequently, probably. Average customer uses seven thousand gallons, septic system is, septic tank is a thousand. So in a month, you're going to be out there, you know, five, six, seven times. That, that doesn't work. The problem is getting the, the liquid that is settled in the septic system out into the leach field and then to disperse through the soils that are there. Now.
I think we need to figure out something, because if, if they're going to, if we expect them to, you know, and not expect them, we have to wait until this, I understand that, but maybe in anticipation of weather issue, different parts of the, times of the year seasonally, or, I wonder, I would like for you to really consider on what it is that we can do to help them. And, and I don't know what that looks like. I think, but I, I would, you know, you've got a really smart board, and, and your staff is phenomenal. I really think that there needs to be something that we can provide them.
I don't, I don't have ideas off the top of our head, but we'll, we'll visit as a team with wastewater and, and see what, what options might be there. I, but, and I, I, we're staff, we're not taking, there's a policy question here. When you talk about a cost of $50,000 per connection, that is a, that's an enormous cost. And E-DAP will not fund projects that are deemed to be too costly on a, on a per-connection basis. And when I worked in McAllen many moons ago, we had a project that came in at 29,000 per connection, and hmm, they just backed off. That was too much. That was eighteen, you know, well, twelve years ago or so. So there's, there's one component of it. When, when the discussion about Brianna Circle and what we might do, or what would, what would be a potential solution, we reached out to, and got references for, you know, some of the best septic system folks in the business in the area. It, it may very well be that when this subdivision was developed, nobody paid attention to the kind of soils, they didn't put in the system that was appropriate for those soils. We reached out to one of the more reputable septic tank folks, and they described a series of solutions. And you've got your basic septic system, which isn't going to work in this case. You can have elevated evapotranspiration beds, you can even do some of these systems that do kind of a quasi-treatment, and then they just irrigate over the yard. And according to that septic system installer, there is an avenue to make a septic system work. work. And I know that doesn't come with the convenience of a gravity system, but you might be looking at something on the order of fifteen thousand dollars per connection to do an advanced septic system that would solve the problem. From a public policy standpoint, this isn't my opinion, I think some would ask the question, should the public and other existing customers be contributing a portion of their, their bill to paying for that fifty thousand dollar per connection cost? Or would it be more appropriate to spend something on the order of fifteen thousand dollars to solve that problem through an appropriate advanced type of septic system? I, I, I don't know for certain what system that would be, I'm just relaying the investigation that we conducted about three years ago into this question. So I, I think there's a, the, the public policy question i- is, is a real one. We have, do have a slide here where I think it might be helpful to outline some of the considerations. In Harlingen, the traditional extension policy has always asked development to pay its own way. And we do that through impact fees and we typically have not done local system extensions. We do the major type of programs. That can change, that's a public policy issue. And so from staff's perspective, you know, we follow the policy that, that's been established until there's a directive to change that. And so I'm, I'm hearing a lot of support for that, that's, means nothing to me either way. Then there's the question of who should pay for the extensions. Uh, we talked about, you know, about fifty thousand at Brianna Circle, forty thousand uh, at another location on Masters, which has, which has an opportunity to connect right away as soon as you do a project, but that's still going to be very expensive, you're repairing streets and so forth.
Tim, before you go on, when you say, um, this per connection, um, how many households are we talking about?
So at Brianna Circle and I. Forty-four?
Masters is about forty-four.
Masters is forty-four.
Brianna, I think it was twenty-five or twenty-six.
Twenty-five or twenty-six. And so, you know, forty thousand per connection on that one point five million dollar project at Masters, so that's kind of where that number comes out, maybe slightly under forty, maybe it's thirty-nine. I mean, there's some duplexes there and whether there's a septic tank for each duplex or the entire structure, I'm not sure. So th- there's a question of who should pay for the extensions? That, that might be a question some ask, others have approached me and said, well, what about these considerations? I'm just gonna air them out without any favoritism for any of these ideas, but some of the options that could be considered, when you're talking about extensions to take folks off septic systems, you could have existing customers pay for that primarily because you've got twenty-six thousand customers and you're gonna have twenty-five, thirty customers who are benefiting, yes, those new customers are gonna be paying, but the vast majority of that cost is gonna be borne by everybody else, uh, who's currently on the system receiving service. That's one way to do it. You have, so the system can completely pays, uh, the, the vast majority of that cost, or you could say that the beneficiary, those who are relieved of their septic tank through a centralized collection, they would pay, that is the most expensive. And so there's fifty thousand and I don't know that many are gonna vote for a fifty thousand dollar bill to do this. There, a- and this is an area where I really don't know much about, um, that you could in, you could develop a special rate district for the beneficiaries and to say, well, you know, for a fixed, you know, period of time, say twenty years, you know, you might pay, you know, extra fifty dollars per month, but to get to fifty thousand dollars, you're talking about two hundred and fifty dollars per month for twenty years. And so that's, I, you know, or you could have a combination of these, these are just some ideas to, to throw out for discussion purposes. Then there's also this idea, our extension policy does need some work. And right now, if a developer comes in and they're distant from where an existing sewer is, a lot of times it's onerous for them to extend a line to, from the existing sewer location to the place where they're going to go. In other communities, they might have a reimbursement certificate where that developer has the promise of receiving reimbursement for the cost that they paid for anybody else who comes in and ties in, say another developer between. And so that would be something, I know in McAllen's case, when I was there, I'm just sharing with what I know, they developed, we had, there was one developer who went, had a two-mile pipeline, twenty-four inches, and they were certain that they were gonna get their money back. And sure enough, that area developed quickly and all the intervening developers between the existing system and their location along that twenty-four-inch pipeline who tied in, the McAllen Public Utility maintained a reimbursement map, so when that developer came in, okay, your assessment is going to be this much. And those new developers paid that with, you know, a small administrative fee, and then the reimbursement then was turned around to the original developer, up to a maximum of a fifteen-year period. We don't really have a mechanism like that in place right now. So where this comes into play in terms of Brianna Circle and other areas, there is the potential for additional development to happen. And if those developers know or believe that growth is gonna be happening quickly enough, they might take the risk to put that money down so that their development can have centralized sewer collection. Uh, this is maybe a more indirect way of going about it, but it's one of those possibilities among all these other options, alone or in, in combination, that might help answer the question about who's paying and what's equitable. Not my decision, but I think that's a public policy question. Then the final question here that I think has to be asked is, is, is about precedent and fair treatment to everyone. We have twenty-six thousand water customers and twenty-two thousand of those are on centralized sewer. So that leaves about four thousand customers in Harlingen who don't, who are on septic, they just, they just have a water sewer, a water service from Harlingen. Now, if we go to a location here and then we look at some areas, um, you've got all kinds of opportunity for folks to say, well, I'd like to connect also. If an extension is made to Sunrise or to Masters or to Brianna Circle, under fair treatment principles, somebody else who says, well, I'd like it too, and I live over here, a concern that I think our board might have is, are we establishing a precedent that obligates us to do this, not just two or three times? We might have to do this hundreds of times at hu- at tens and tens or hundreds of millions of dollars. Whether that happens, and it may be that most of the folks over in here have soils that drain, and they may never ask that question. I don't know that, these are uncertainties that we have, but I think that i- in deciding to go and eliminate septic systems, I, I think, eyes need to be wide open and.
I understand that, but I think just, just the way you prioritized, um, your plan here, then it could be prioritize, you know, prioritize the plan for folks that are on septic. So clearly the people that need it the most would be the ones that would get it first. And then that would be, you know, again, a policy decision on whether you extend it to, to the remainder, but I don't think that we can, you know, we don't want to not, uh, extend sewer to folks that absolutely need it as a health, um, and safety issue because of the fact that, you know, others like me, I have a septic, but I don't have nearly the same issues, right? I have some issues, but I can't compare, so then I think that if you prioritize that, it should be fine.
I really liked your idea of the way they did it in McAllen, right? Like, how do we, uh, incentivize the, the developers to put in the infrastructure we need so that they could hopefully tap in even sooner, right? So if we do the like, not only, that doesn't have to be the only, uh, the one you just gave us, right, where they piecemeal it, right? But maybe that's something you guys look at, look at how other, how can we promote development where the developer takes the risk, but then people like, uh, Brianna Circle, like Masters can benefit and get it faster than they normally would? Worst-case scenario, let's just say this, and I think the people here know, worst-case scenario, they're looking at twenty twenty-eight. So let's see if there's other options that we can do, benefits everyone, and they can get it faster.
I think ultimately the goal, I mean, at least for me, I think the ultimate goal for the city overall should be, because I, this primarily affects my district, my district's the one that has all the septic tanks. So I think primarily, I think the goal should be, because I, I don't think it's ever, and like, I know it wasn't a master plan, but I think the ultimate goal is that everybody should be on this sewer. I mean, that's, that's, I, I think sewage is a basic right that they should have, a basic expectation that they should have from the city. And, um, I think eventually we need to go there, and I, I don't think we've ever actually addressed that or actually made that a goal, like, okay, this is gonna be our goal to get everybody on sewer. We basically just have been going along and like, well, if someone develops a, you know, maybe they'll connect and maybe they won't. I think we need to change that mindset and say, you know what, our goal is to get everybody connected, everybody should have this service. This is twenty twenty-four, there should be, you know, we shouldn't have people having to go to Target to use the restroom, um, in twenty twenty-four.
Agreed.
They can't use it, you know?
If I may say something, it was nineteen sixty-seven, our township up along, up above the Ohio River, we were getting sewage. My dad bitched and complained, as did everybody else, because it cost major league money to find the septic tank and hook the sewage into it, but we all had to pay. And requiring existing twenty-two thousand existing customers to pay for those who don't is pure socialist. I'm not a fan of socialist. Hang on, hang on, wait, 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 and let me continue. You, you got sewage and it costs you fifty thousand dollars, your house is now worth, your property is now worth fifty thousand dollars more because you have something that somebody else up the street or down the street doesn't have. So it's an improvement to your property that increases the wealth of your property.
And also the point of order, a lot of people purchase properties in those areas because of the fact that they did not want to pay the cost to be tied into, not true, not, not necessarily everybody, I, I'm not, I don't mean to lump everybody into it, but, you know, there are points of that.
I think, I think, and that, and that, I think, is a, uh, you know, a conversation to have at, at a later time on what we're gonna do long-term for everyone that is on septic. I think that, you know, we do definitely need, there, there may be people that don't want to, to your point, that say, you know what, I'm fine, I'm fine with my septic, I don't want to, but then there's folks that do. But I think that, and again, that's why I just wanna kind of circle back and, and say the priority is the need right now, because we know that everyone that are in those two areas, that it's not a matter of, um, you know, providing additional service, it's, it's, it's fixing the issues that they have because it is a public hea-, you know, a health and safety issue in, in my, in my view. So I think we kinda need to keep that focused. I do agree with Commissioner Perez that we, you know, it's twenty twenty-four and everyone that lives within the city should have it, and that's maybe selfish, right, because I, I'm on a septic myself. But at the same time, I think that, you know, we have a ton of, I mean, we look at, at all the money that needs to be expended on, on things that are absolutely necessary, and so we need to prioritize how we get to there, and that may be a long, a longer, um, term, term plan for the folks that want to be, and then having those conversations with, you know, folks that may not want to have those additional costs, um, and that are doing just fine on, on, on their septic, because they may be in a different situation, just like the county where it's not an issue, right? So I think that, that those are, and, and to your point, Commissioner, you know, in, in talking about, we don't want to overburden, you know, the, the other, um, folks in our community to have higher bills to, to pay for the others that need this, I think that is a valid argument. However, I think that this governing body does have a responsibility to these individuals to make sure that we come up with a, a plan to get it done. And so how that, how we do that, I'm not sure, and that's why we're here. But we can't just pass the buck and we definitely can't say, you know, um, to each household, you're responsible for fifty thousand dollars to connect a service in the city of Harlingen. That's just not, that's just not something that we can, that we can do. It, it, it would be, I, I, I don't think that that is what anybody is intending to do here in this room, because we can talk about it, but it's not realistic, and it, it wouldn't be fair.
To, to the que-
One last thing, yeah, just going back to what we were saying earlier, could city staff, Josh, I know you and Javier and Luis have worked with other cities before, can you guys work with the waterworks and present them with some options? But the, how other cities are growing their infrastructure where it doesn't put the burden on the city or the waterworks, uh, puts it on the developer, but the developers are incentivized to do it, exactly what Tim is saying. Let's present you guys with the options and then you guys, uh, bird dog them, see which one's best.
And, and Tim, I will tell you just, you know, just my, my view, I, I'm, I'm, I'm constantly learning. And, and I, I go to our sister cities and I go and I talk with Edinburgh, I talk with McAllen and Brownsville and try to learn how they're doing things. If I see that they're doing things that are, um, that would help our community and I, there's no shame in saying, hey, I wanna go sit down and talk with your, um, utility so that way we can see what you're doing and see if that would help.
Well, let, let me say this, are, are the, the, what you, what you're talking about is an extension policy and that's a waterworks chapter in the code, and so it's, it's, it's an effort that we would like to undertake. We have an extension policy in chapter forty-eight of the code that, uh, is frankly, it's outdated, it doesn't allow or doesn't speak to the question of reimbursements.
You're talking about the statute or your own term of policy?
We're talking about the city code of ordinances, chapter forty-eight, which is waterworks.
That's why we're here.
Right, well, right, no, exactly, but, but there has to be a process to study that. And so, I, I mean, Josh is over here thinking, oh, like, that, that's waterworks domain, and I think that's a research project that we would undertake. And we've intended to do this, we just, we've got a lot of priorities on our.
I think one thing to consider, Commissioner, is that fifteen years is not enough time to have the developer make a big investment and wait to get reimbursed. It needs, it needs to be at least twenty to twenty-five years.
Again, I leave that to you guys, you guys are the big brains in the room.
But it, it might be that that's some sort of, of, it might be that we have to go to the state's.
McAllen was going fast.
Enasim to actually amend the, uh, state statutes to actually do that, I don't know.
And if we have to go to Austin, we will go to Austin, do our part, right?
No, I, there's no state prohibition on, on the, the term, it's McAllen's choice. They felt like, hey, if you don't get that within fifteen years, we're hanging on to this money and having to administer something that might not.
Yeah, but it's a state statute requirement, and I think twenty, twenty-five have got to be amended.
That'll be a policy discussion when we get in, when we get there, but.
There are four lawyers in the room here, so it's a legal question. Can the city force citizens to tax them in fees to improve private property of others?
Well, isn't that, um, when we're, what we're, what we're considering right now to, and in the rate study, is to increase rates because you, I mean, you have to make all these improvements, there's certain folks within the.
For the benefit of everybody.
Well, I wouldn't say not necessarily, because there are pockets in this, in the community where people are just fine, but we're doing this.
The thing is, we're not gonna pay where it's gonna go directly from, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, they're not paying for it to go directly to their specific house because they're still gonna have to pay to connect to the main line, correct?
Right, and so that's, that's a good point I was just thinking about. When we talk about fifty thousand per connection, that's the public infrastructure.
Right.
Septic tanks are in the back, and when I had to do a sewer line, service line reroute, I paid a lot of money. Today, that's going to be, I'm just gonna venture a guess, five thousand to ten thousand dollars just to reroute by gravity a sewer, service line from your septic system, because all your.
Decommissioning, facts, and people saying that.
I'm guessing at a number, but I think it's gonna be over five thousand. And so you're gonna have to route that from the backside of the house, around to the front, cut the street, tap into that sewer line. That's in addition to the fifty thousand per connection we're talking about, so you're now getting closer to fifty-five, sixty thousand.
So I think that, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, I think that addresses your thing, because we're not literally going to their homes, onto their own private property and connecting it, that's not what we're doing, we're just giving them access, because right now they have no access to whatsoever.
Correct.
They have no access.
That's right.
That's what I wanna do, is I want them to have access to it. We're not going to their property and doing it.
There, there, there is currently an unenforced section in the code that says that waterworks, uh, the city can require that customers who are fronting a, a pipeline can mandate that they would, that they would connect. And we current, we have not been doing that, but that policy is there. I think it's really difficult to mandate that somebody connect, but you can certainly charge them for sewer so that when they're ready, they will have certainly been paying their sewer rates into it. That is a question, if you do an extension into a subdivision where half of the people have a bad septic system problem and others don't, you're gonna have half of those people gonna be really happy and half of those are gonna be really upset because now they're paying sewer.
Are you gonna make it mandatory?
That's a policy question.
He's saying that it already is, we're just not enforcing it. Uh, Tim, everybody that connects to the sewer is gonna have to pay an impact fee, right?
That would be correct.
Okay. One of the things that we can do is, while we talk about all this, is that we need to figure out some sort of strategy, how we're gonna charge those people that are in Brianna Circle or Masters. What we can do is just build up everything to where we get to that yellow section that you have to build out, and then there, uh, just use your general fund money to pay for it, because you're not gonna get, I mean, there are fund balance to pay for it, because you're not gonna get any E-DAP money to pay for that. Tim's already said it's just too high, no one's gonna fund it. So the only way you're gonna be able to pay for something like that and figure out how you're gonna get reimbursed is to use fund balance. how are you going to get reimbursed is to use fund balance.
Yeah. And if you think that is necessary, that's assuming all 27 or 30 homes.
Correct.
Managed or around the system.
That's right.
What if only 15?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's a paper number then, but your, I mean, your effective cost for those, for those customers. Somebody who's got a great septic system today and says, I want no part of this. I, I just want to keep using my septic one day. They're going to have a problem and they're going to say, oh, well, I guess I'll connect now, but that might not be for 40 years.
So, so what outreach has Harlingen Water Works done to find out, you know, who does and who doesn't?
Those are private property questions. I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about who is fronting on a property but not connected. That's, that's the question. There, there, there have been many that we know about. And I think that at one point in time, there was an effort to go catalog and quantify that. That's not a number that we currently maintain, but we know that there are, that there are many. And it has not been the practice of Harlingen Water Works to enforce that section of the code. So.
And is that common in other communities? Or how does Harlingen?
If you are, yeah, that's, that's not uncommon. I, I believe McAllen. I, I worked there, so I know a little bit about their policy. They, they did have that requirement. The way the code's written, you can compel them to connect, but that's in practice very difficult. So the alternative in those cases is just to start assessing a sewer charge even though they're not discharging to the sewer system. To, to your question of one of the things that could be done immediately, but now, now we're getting into constructing things on private property. Customers on Brianna Circle, waterworks could go and contract to do the soil investigations, to hire a septic system installer who could provide and install a septic system for those residents that would be capable and competent to provide a long-term sanitary sewer service in perpetuity or until the time that some of these improvements can be made. But now you're talking about spending public funds on a private piece of property. That's the fastest way to the solution. And I've been led to believe by experts that.
You can't do that.
That, that the septic system is feasible. It's just not going to be the common standard, run-of-the-mill kind. You're going to need to do a higher level or two beyond what's the standard is.
You would have to create some sort of program where they would have to fly for, get approved, and then receive the funds themselves to use only certain contractors to do that work.
Well, and that's the, I mean, that would be the fastest way to.
Well, I mean, to do that, because you can't go on there yourself and, and spend.
Well, voluntarily, if it's a program that's offered, I'm sure those who want it would raise their hand and say, yeah, you, you may. Please, please do. But that's how you get there quickly. That's the most, that's the quickest route to sewer service. If you want to do it through conventional sewer, it's, there's a process of, of a few years before we can get there.
How long have you lived at your home?
10 years.
And, and did you, have you had problems for 10 years?
I've had problems.
For 10 years?
You have two tanks and they get through the gravity. Because of those holes that are present in, in the area, so pumping of the, of those tanks, in, in my situation, I have to pump them out more often than somebody that's has better, better sort of correct. They, they don't, they don't have any issues.
And what does that cost you each time?
Uh, right now, it's about $300.
Twice?
Yes.
Six, though, 600 bucks.
It's 600 every time they come out. It's just about me.
Uh, how often? Once a year?
It's, it's been about usually on a yearly basis. One time at least a year I, I will do it. But I try not to, so, you know, just find other ways to minimize. Because if I try to pump it anymore, it becomes a constant.
I'm sorry. I, oh, we'll, we'll go ahead, but this is, I just want to reiterate, this is not normal, normal practice. I know the commission's probably going to.
I've been there since my, my wife gets, it's 2002, her and this home, built our home. And the problem was after a heavy rain, ground was saturated. We have two septic tanks. We called the guy to get it out. Why is our drain, you know, back overflow, it's flowing up after heavy rainstorm? He said we needed to add more water lines away from the septic. There wasn't enough type of water to be released, so we needed to add more lines, which we did. That alleviated the problem. And then it becomes hurricane drought. Lot of rain. And then 2018, 2019, those heavy rains turned, what meteorologists call the under-year rainstorm. That was a problem too. We don't have a problem with drainage on Brianna Circle. The water drains, the street breaks. It's when the rains, the ground are saturated. And we try to flush, we try to wash clothes, or we try to, you know, normal everyday activities, it's, it backs up. And then now you got problems of the smell.
And this has been going on for 20 years, is what you're saying?
Right.
Except for.
We, we had problems of water overflowing, like, what's the word about? When you flush and it back up, back up. I know there is a home on Brianna Circle. She even told me that every time she washes clothes every day, her kids cannot take a shower at that same time while she's washing clothes. And that's an inconvenience. She goes, it's, it's a problem because the water is draining from the washing machine into the septic. Septics overflow there. Excuse me. Therefore, her boys cannot take a shower while she's washing clothes. So you got to do one or the other to prevent that overflowing. It can be a problem.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Sorry, Tim.
How many do you need for a quorum? How many members do you need for a quorum?
Good eye, good eye.
Are they gone?
You, you only have two, right? The, the other one went to the bathroom. Did Chris leave?
Yeah, yeah, but he went to the restroom. That's what he's saying.
You don't need a quorum in order to conduct a meeting.
Do we? I know we don't have, we don't have a decision here to make, but.
We're good.
Okay. So I, I'm going to, we, we've been here for two hours. I'm going to accelerate through this.
Yes. And I'm going to run to the restroom while you accelerate.
Okay.
And hopefully we're way down.
Accelerate through this. It's too late, Tim.
All right. So we're going to talk a little bit more about District Five's area out in West. We started doing that before I forgot my order of things and.
22.
22, Lift Station 55 upgrade. And we've got this force main problem over here with the manifold, with a bunch of lift stations pumping into it. There's a solution to that, and that is by upgrading Lift Station 55, constructing what we're calling Osborne Sewer. This would be about a 24-inch pipeline that would eliminate three lift stations. 54 on Stewart Place is a habitual problem. Wastewater's going to be overjoyed at that. We have a, an overflowing manhole in Wildwood that will no longer have that kind of a problem. This is altogether a Lift Station 55 and Osborne together about $2.2 million, 12.2 million. So this is a significant project. So now with that, we are through the moderate delay sewer capital improvement plan. The additional projects that fill out the on-time plan that the master plan defined as needed within the first five years includes another sewer renewal replacement project. We'd actually like to do that a little bit sooner because those problems occur today. If I were to remove the priority sewer package right here, those purple lines that you're seeing are the additional projects associated with that $6.4 million project. We did talk about the Morgan Pipeline that we would like to move up. It's a rather small project, so that won't be a challenge and it won't have any impact on the rate plan. But it does help eliminate some of those predicted overflows. We talked about West Street already. And that being a $4.2 million would be great to do that concurrently with the city. The next project, and I've grouped several multiple lift station rehabilitation, and so I'll flash those back and forth. These are, these are upgrades to failing lift stations that need to be undertaken. We do have a clay force main that I guarantee you leaks to some degree coming out of Lift Station 29. And so that would be resolved. East Royal Lift Station in Force Main is this area over here off of Paso Real that to completely serve this, if this builds out with a significant amount of sewer flow, we're going to need another avenue because we can't get it through Lift Station 5. So we're going to need a lift station and a force main across the Royal to the treatment plant. And we also have the potential to eliminate Lift Station 73 by a gravity line from its current location. And so this opens up some potential for additional development in this area that would otherwise not be possible. So now, everything that we have on screen should reflect the full five-year on-time plan. If we take off the on-time and look at moderate delay, it looks like this. If we take off moderate and look at simply long delay, we're looking at this. So going backwards, moderate delay adds those projects and on-time adds these others. Rehabilitation projects don't eliminate the sewer overflows. And so if the priority is to let's, let's prevent customers from having an issue, then the moderate delay is the one that achieves the biggest benefit for the most customers. All right. So that is, that's on the sewer side. Let's change gears and move right into water. And our water mains populate the service area something like this.
Real quick. Unless it's already on here. So the long delay five year, what's the total dollar amount?
The long delay five year is still around in the neighborhood of 136 million.
56 million. And then the moderate delay?
181, 182.
182 million. And then the on-time five year?
257. Well, I tell you what.
Yeah, 258.
Let's go ahead and do this.
Okay. I just wanted to write it down on my little sheet. Thank you.
There we go. Here's the cumulative total and the 133. Now, we would be doing some design for these two big projects and so that, we can't reflect that. So it still is about 136 for the long delay, 181 for the moderate delay, and 257 for the full on-time.
257.
257.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
That's all projects combined, not just sewer.
And then if we did the on-time 10-year, which is the bottom little.
That's just for reference in case you wanted to see what's, what's beyond that, but we didn't intend to talk about it tonight. Just, we had the space on the page, so why not give it to you?
All right. Thank you.
All right. So on the water side, this is our system. Our service area is quite a bit smaller. I'm going to step through this as quickly as I might. And let us start with, okay, we have a small project that we've already completed at the downtown treatment plant that's in our current budget. So that's being paid out of fund balance. We have miscellaneous water line connections. And so those are circled here. Some of them are really small. These help improve circulation and dead ends. Water quality improves, pressure improves. We bid this project, we designed this in-house, bid it out, and that's when we started to say, okay, construction prices are about 60% more than they were in the master plan. So we're basically confirming what our consultants are telling us through this bid. We did not accept that bid. We didn't have qualified contractors, so we're going to go back out and include that other hand road sewer project together with this, and that may encourage more bidding competition. Peer replacement at the, at the treatment plant, relatively small project. I won't go into much detail there. We do have what we're calling, we have, we supply the reservoir at our downtown water treatment from the main canal. And that's along 13th Street where there's a five-by-five concrete box that intakes the water, sends it up 13th Street, right to the west side of the, the football stadium. And then it continues up to Jefferson, and then it cuts across basically on the north curb line and then goes into the treatment plant. That line is undersized, sprouts a lot of leaks, and it is the reason why we can only supply about 12 million gallons a day to our downtown treatment plant. It can. It's rated for 18, but if we had to have a sustained flow greater than that, we would run out of water. By this project, we would upgrade it, I think with a 48-inch pipeline. We're currently in design and we would start construction sometime in the winter of 2025 on this project.
Pipeline goes under the library?
So let me zoom it up.
Or it goes through.
We would intercept it here.
No, no, further west.
Here we go.
Yes, yes.
So this is the, the Cultural Arts Center. And so our proposal, because of existing lines.
Runs right by the cultural, cultural arts.
Right. We're going to go right down the street is what we're proposing to do.
Correct.
What were you thinking? It was going under?
Yeah, that was, I was afraid of.
Is that where it is now or is that where you're going to put it?
This is where we're going to put it. Where, where it is right now is, is right here. This blue line actually is representing what that is.
Oh, so it's pretty close by.
So.
You going to tear up our street?
Oh, we're going to rebuild it. It's a big hole.
Almost.
There's no other way. I mean, you find a better, cheaper way to do it, we'll do it. But this is about as good as it gets. Railroad Right-Away, we're going to rely on them. So to get that pipe out of the road, I mean, it's, I mean, it's a much higher risk to the existing railroad than our proposed line, but they still want to force us through a nine-month process for permit approval, but.
You're, you're betting that the railroad's going to give you Right-Away?
Well, we're already in there Right-Away and giving them a much higher risk. So that's the argument. That pipeline fails, your railroad is out of commission. If you allow us to move it, you'll never have to worry. That's the motive. That's the, we've got to go to the donut shop and we've got to procure some property here and easement, and so there'll be some cost there. We want to do most of this project when this treatment plan is offline during the coldest winter months. And that's why, we, we actually think a lot of this pipeline could be built in the summer. So, you know, maybe summer of 2025, we would start construction. But the tie-ins in the critical junctures, we would do that in winter time. That's the ways out. It's under design right now. Total cost on this is, okay, this is project number six on the water CIP, $7.4 million. And we're making progress toward this. So I should back up and talk about water rights purchase, number one, on the water. We have the opportunity, as property becomes developed and subdivided from an irrigation-type agricultural use to a residential or commercial municipal use. We can buy the water rights associated with that. And we do that whenever we have the opportunity. And so we're budgeting about $500,000 per year over a five-year plan. Same thing on the next one project, number two, local system participation and sponsorship. If we have a water line to participate in, we'll do that or we can do some local area extension. So that brings us back up to, we've gone through six, let's go to 7A. And that is the Rapid Mix Project at our Dixieland Water Treatment Plant. And we discussed this with the board. A board approved a contract to study a particular problem here. Hydraulics are not good. We've got expensive equipment to replace, but we don't want to do that because the hydraulics will jeopardize that new equipment. So we're going to study a plan here. It may not be terribly expensive, or it could come up into the territory of four or $5 million. So that's what that is. Stage W6, downtown fire flow improvements. And for many years, there has been a call from District Number Four to provide additional fire coverage. Lines are too small. The coverage of fire hydrants is too few. And so we, through the master planning process, identified a Phase One and a Phase Two project to address that issue. And so the red lines represent upgrades in pipeline size or pipelines in new areas. And the yellow dots here represent new fire hydrants that would be added for the benefit of these residents. The $500,000 that's budgeted or that's shown in the long delay plan is associated with the understanding there may be some CBDG funds in this upcoming cycle to help pay for a portion of this. If you go down to 8B on the moderate delay plan, you're going to see the remainder of that project cost. So overall, we're at about 5, 5.3 million for this entire project. So not, not an insignificant project, but it's addressing a concern that's been raised by.
But what happens if you don't get to it, but you might, because you probably won't?
Well, I won't.
Because we've been putting them.
Because it's gonna go, we've been putting them in parks.
See, that's, that's what, uh, that's what happened last year. We're gonna go with that, but it was switched over to parks so we can, so you guys can finish the parks and we can address this issue this coming year.
We don't have. Cause that's, that's, uh, we only get like eight-hundred thousand and then so you have to take public servers and then admin. You won't get that in one year.
We need to start addressing it.
And that's been happening everywhere. And it's not just Harlingen. That's something we can talk to, um, George about.
George who?
Our lobby, federal lobbyists, to get HUD to give us more money. But it's been shrinking. I talked to Lupita Muniz, who's been on that board since like, since the back, when they first started. And she said that that used to be like, you know, everyone wants to be on the airport board? Everyone wanted to be on the community development advisory board because that was the one that got like ten million dollars. And then since, what, whenever it started, twenty years ago, it's been.
It shrinks every year.
It was something insane. She was like, it was like, it was where all the, everyone rubbed elbows and everything, caviar, all that. I'm kidding. It was like a, it was a big thing. But you're right, we need to get more money. I completely agree with you, but I think Gabe's just giving us the more realistic response here. But let's do what you.
At, at the end of the day, we could've been working on this for, for decades. And that's what Desi kept on stressing. This CBGG funds could've been addressing some of the issues. And so does that E D C A board and the B board. So two-hundred thousand dollars five years ago would've gone a long way compared to right now. So now we're playing catch-up. I understand that. I have been very quiet, but this is one that needs to be addressed with the lake.
I don't disagree with you at all. I'm just, Gabe's just giving us the realistic point.
Yeah, he's not gonna get.
So let's find out if I haven't used to fund it, but it, you're right, it is a priority.
Some of the context on that.
What, what are you gonna take this half a million dollars and just use CBGG in its place? Is that what you're planning on doing?
So there would be a portion of this project that we talked about that we would use CBGG funds. There was a discussion that, that was held and there, there was, it was a subject i- in a city commission meeting where we talked about some allocation of CBGG funds for this project to the tune of maybe two-hundred thousand. Public, uh, parks had an opportunity that if they used those funds in the totality, they could get, uh, matching funds to do a project. And so the idea that we discussed with, uh, with Javier was that if water, waterworks said, okay, we'll, we'll forego our opportunity this year, that when we come back next year, we could double up on that. And that's where the five-hundred thousand came from, in that we've kind of already backed off of a request for CD, CBGG funds last year in exchange to double up the next year.
Why can't you use your fund balance to make a difference?
Well, you, you can, but CBGG is designed for this purpose.
They're not gonna have after a million. So I'm trying to tell you that we need to plan for something to help because CBGG can't give you half a million in one year.
Well, it could, it could if the city commission would determine that would be the.
No, there's not.
I think what he's saying is that they, they won't have that after they, after the expenses that they have in terms of administrative cost and other.
If they're, if the CBGG funds weren't there, well.
Right, right.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. It's probably not gonna be. They only get eight-hundred thousand right now. And they have to pay for public services, which give out to some of the other agencies that needed. That's usually at least a hundred-and-fifty thousand and then for admin. So when you take that and then, yeah, you're not gonna have after a million dollars.
Okay.
And we'll work on our part, um, in, in terms of trying to, I mean, I don't know if we'll be able to remedy it, but we will definitely, um, work with our congressman and, and our lobbyists that we have out there because, like Daniel said, this is a problem across, across the board. It's not just Harlingen that has been impacted and so we'll work.
I don't know if you saw, but Semenito like took a jab at us and said that we got more money than them. I think I sent it to you.
Yes.
But we're getting lessened, yeah. We'll work on it.
Yeah, no, for sure.
The five-hundred thousand is included in, in, in the plan, so it's not presuming that that's going to be.
Yeah.
So if, if it's not coming from CBGG, the rate plan is considering it, so.
We'll have to figure it out.
Sludge lagoon improvements, we've got some lagoons. We produce sludge at our treatment plants and these lagoons have been accumulating sludge. Uh, we're preparing to evacuate these, but the concrete liner's in really bad shape. Uh, we had a study that recommended some improvements to do that. So that's what the one-point-eight million is all about in that case. So that is all in the long delay and we don't have any projects in the moderate delay that add to the long delay. So, uh, the next project that we have is the asbestos cement water line replacement on North First Street. Our preference would be that that project would not wait for more than five years, but it is this entire area here. As asbestos cement pipe, when we look at asbestos cement pipe consists about, represents about thirty percent of our system, but it is by far the, the, the pipe that we experience most of our main breaks in. And so to the extent that we can get rid of that asbestos cement pipe using a pipe version process, uh, we have done this type of project on a similar scale in Treasure Hills. We've also done it up near Pendleton Place. It's not showing up here. These are projects that have been completed, but that same process we would apply to North First Street, right behind the DPS station, I believe it is. So then we have a. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. I see it perfectly.
I just wanna see what, what streets and what end what.
So we're by West Davis and, and West Mans.
By DPS, Chapitas.
How many, like how many lots is that?
Five?
This is, this would be the biggest of the projects. We did one in Treasure Hills that was, uh, less footage or less pipe replacement, same thing with Pendleton. They were still substantial projects, but this is a seven-million-dollar project in twenty-twenty-three cost, so. This will, and this will have meaningful impact. When we did those other two projects, we noticed, okay, we're doing fewer main break repairs. And we have maybe another six to, six to ten projects like this that we'd like to do over the next twenty years. We need to be replacing that asbestos cement pipe. Okay, so, uh, with that, we will go to Morris Road Water Line. This is a two-inch water line currently. I advanced too far. Let's start, talk about Dixieland Transmission Main. Out of the treatment plant, we currently cut across the golf course in a line that is, I think it's asbestos cement, not in great shape. And so the recommendation is we need to find a different route. So the idea, we would come out to Dixieland Road, follow the road, and then cut north on Louisiana and then connect it where that existing line currently sits. This will significantly improve circulation. It will also help feed the next project, which is Morris Road, upsizing that from a two-inch to an eight-inch. And you're connecting now, you're bridging between Ed Carey and Rangerville Road. Uh, that's a, a big benefit. We also have.
You're just gonna abandon that line on the golf course, right?
Yes, we wanna, we wanna, we wanna abandon that.
You're not gonna take it out?
That adds a lot of cost. I mean, it can stay there.
Yeah, cause we're, we're redoing the golf course. It's costing us like five.
Lay it where it lies.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is gonna be, I mean, we have it scheduled later. It could be moved up if, if that's a desirable. Okay, so Morris Road was the last one we talked about. Let's go to, uh, South Bass Boulevard.
Time out real quick. I'm sorry, going back to the corner of Morris and Louisiana, isn't there a whole new development going in there? I think we just approved it like two meetings ago, right?
Right here.
So aren't they gonna update, are, are they gonna upgrade the water?
So, so perhaps part of the under ten, developer engineer, this is an example of our, our water works participate. So rather than extending the minimum of eight, they would, we would be participating with an upside sixteen.
Which is what you want.
Which is this up here?
No, it's over here.
No, but this money, this bucket of money up here is how you share in the cost or no?
Uh, local system participation will pay, will pay the difference between.
Yeah, okay.
And one added measure of certification, our participation doesn't necessarily mean that we would actually do like the entirety of the Morris Road line. It's only the sec, only the section that's applicable to the subdivision. So the six-inch line will end there at the intersection with the subdivision.
Okay. Did we, didn't, we just gave money for Morris Road to be fixed? Has it, it's already been fixed, right?
It's been fixed a couple of years ago.
Okay, okay, okay. So it's gonna be torn up again.
That's wonderful.
Okay, South Bass, uh, there's some low pressures. We say that we have no capacity deficiencies. This is a long way out and there's a few, uh, yellow dots or, uh, lower pressures that show up on your max day. And so it's been recommended, though not many customers, to upsize those small two-inch lines to eight-inch lines. And that's what that project's all about. And we have the last one that is actually this, then. Okay, let's move to seven B, which is right below it. We talked about the rapid mix. If we need to do some significant improvements, uh, to this basin structure here, this is a much larger project. It's really contingency funding that we may not need to spend. It may be a portion of that, it may be none of that, um, but we need to plan for it, so that's why that appears. The next one is the downtown fire flow improvement, so we already covered that where that would be a much larger four-point-eight million in addition to the five, so total of about five-point-three million. And then we have, uh, lagoon access improvements. We're going back to another location where we can get by without those access improvements, but we really need a ramp to be able to get a truck up here and to remove that sludge rather than trying to drive through a very difficult path. And, uh, we can't get there without going through some of this park property. Uh, those access improvements would improve our operations, uh, to the tune of about five-hundred thousand.
And you guys are gonna do that in-house or contracted?
Abandoned contracted. That's, that's a paving type of project where, where pipe diggers not really.
I gotta, I gotta road.
I see your.
I got a road digger right there. He can just say he got some money to cover the cost on Frank's project on the fire things. You got a project for your Oscar?
He'll, he'll do it when he, when he's got some spare time, Commissioner.
Yeah.
He's really busy right now.
Okay, so we have just completed with that and everything we're seeing on this map is the five-year plan. You've got the long delay, you've got the on-time plan. You know, we've, we've tried to assess that, okay, we could put some of these projects, you know, further off. If I had my druthers, I'd like to take project ten and move it up into the moderate delay if that's where we end up, but, um, who knows? We, I, I would suggest we can leave it where it is for now and then see how, see how our costs really do play out. Okay, and then one final project I do wanna pop up. There's a water tower that has been suggested that, that we need. And the problem with putting in another water tower here is, yes, it would provide more resiliency if you have a power outage and your treatment plants can't be, can't deliver water. But adding treat, adding water towers requires that you flush that tank from time to time. Cause if you don't have a lot of water movement in and out of that tank, that water is the same water, it gets stale, the disinfectant disappears, and then you have to flush it.
Is that off Kemalot?
Yeah. This is actually where our existing big unused water tank is located. Unfortunately, we have two of these that are, cannot be used, so. They're, they're grounds, they're ground storage tanks and you have to pump out of them and the circulation problem. It, it provides you nothing. You're, you're not, you're not.
The artisan well, right? That's what they call them, the ones off the ground?
Um, no, this is, this was just intended as kind of a temporary holding point so that you could pump water and boost your system pressure using that pump station. But in practice, this was really not helpful at all and.
My, uh, my kids and my wife and I, this is about thirty years old or so, so we love making fun of it and we still call it the spaceship.
That thing's thirty years old?
Yeah.
It was like yesterday when they built it.
It was goofy when they built it.
It was a poor, it was a poor engineering decision.
Yeah.
And so this one and the one on Rio Hunter Road, we do not use. Just not, not useful. It would be far better as, as a water tower, and so that is the proposal. There could be an obligation for us to build that water tower beyond our control, and I'll leave it at that. We would prefer not to do that and to delay that as long as we possibly can, and that's why it, that's why we don't show it on the five-year plan. But there are projects like this that could emerge. And so, you know, do you, do you put everything on there? Do you try and have a mix of contingency and so forth, so?
To demo it.
We would demolish it and build a water tower. This is a ground storage tank that provides basically no, you have to.
Yeah, 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 I get that part, I got that part.
So we are now done with, with the water and now I think we're going to move on to, um, the next, the reverse side of the page, annual meter replacement. We're allocating or projecting two-hundred-and-four thousand per year at a five-year cost of one million dollars. We can call this a CIP project. If you collectively group them individually, they're not more than sixty, seventy dollars apiece, but, um, we have a need. A lot of our water meters are old and they don't register properly. So our customers right now are getting a great deal, they're getting a lot more water. Uh, replacing meters is part of that, but we need to, we need to undertake a much higher level of that. We also have these large meters in our system and I would like to show what large meters look like. Oh, boy. Turn off some other stuff. Okay. The, this is the collection of large meters in our system. I think there's somewhere about one, hundred-and-thirty, about thirty-two of them?
Yes.
Okay. Right. And many of these are not in, in great shape. I did not, uh, I did not use the file that you had there, Joseph. I apologize for that, but, um, so if we take a look here, I wanna show some of the issues that we have with our. Where are we? Well, well, well. Something didn't get saved to, here we go, right here. Large meter installations. The, the conditions in which these meters are located is not good. A lot of these meter boxes are in bad shape. There's no working space in here. You, you don't, can't have the necessary valves that you would want. Some of these are operating underwater, heavily deteriorated structures. And so we've identified a project to replace or upgrade the installation to a more sta, to a better standard, to get them out of the water, to get them out of a buried condition, to upgrade the, the valve vaults. So we have a collection of, how many of these meters? Twenty-seven for the two-point-four million dollar total? So twenty-seven of those meters, uh, we would replace at a cost of two-point-four million. That's not generating more revenue, it's just improving a maintenance condition where this is a, th- these are not good locations. And if we ever wanna put a smart meter in there, electronic meter, you have to have a better environment than this is. A lot of these meters are really old, fifteen, twenty or more years. Maybe there's some thirty-year-old and they do not, meter accuracy deteriorates over time. And so there's also a benefit, uh, in terms of, uh, realizing that the correct amount of flow that customers are demanding. We have on number three, lead service line field survey, and we do need to update that cost because. So you're familiar with, with Flint, Michigan, the, the issue with lead service lines and in the bipartisan, or I should say the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act of twenty-twenty-one? I might be getting the date wrong, but within the last two or three years, significant amount of money was allocated to fixing the lead service line problem. And in tech, and part of that is understanding where you have lead service lines. We feel that we have very few, if any at all. However, we cannot rule all of our service line, our customer service lines out as having a potential to be led. So the requirement from EPA is that we're gonna have to go and dig those up on both sides of the meter to establish whether they're led or not. And this is an unfunded mandate, except that the Water Development Board is now allocate, or the EPA or the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act has allocated, uh, a significant amount of funding, fifty-one percent grant money, forty-nine percent loan. And so about half of this two-point-two million that we've, that we've stated here would actually be a cost. 2.2 million that we've, that we've stated here would actually be a cost to Water Works. So I think that we could take and tune that number down by about a million dollars, 1.2 million somewhere in that neighborhood. So that's actually good news. That's an application that we filed last year. And we thought we weren't gonna qualify, but there's so much money in that fund that we don't think we're gonna find any lead lines. But we have to investigate and document that and then publish our results on our website.
Can you use that for the rest of the fire hards that we need or?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Commissioner, in this district.
So that.
Get them all done.
That works.
All right. So if we go down to project number four, AMI meter replacement, $15 million. We're not really sure on the phasing here. We did submit an application to the Water Development Board. It did score as a green project, but by ranking points, it wasn't high enough to get up into a, a loan or, or much less a grant category. This would be a replacement of customer water meters that are mechanical meters with an, an advanced metering infrastructure, basically a smart meter that communicates either through a cell signal or a series of radio towers or radio transmitters that are established in, in a few locations around town. These would be high accuracy meters, typically a life of about 20 years. The pricing here included leak detection. We do not proactively go out and do sonic leak detection, but there are meters that integrate that technology and they can triangulate where you have a leak just because of where that's coming from, the intensity of that sound. So we do think AMI metering technology is the future for everybody. But for us to finance that on our own right now, there's a difficult financial case to make. Those who do it are typically doing it for other reasons, accountability, for, you know, customer transparency. We don't quite have that motivation. We've done a study. There are some alternative funding sources, but as far as grant money goes, there's, this is more likely a loan that we would have to repay.
If, if there were lead pipes, I would guess that they would be in the oldest neighborhoods in the city.
Correct. And so what we have done, and they allow you to do this based on the codes that were in place at such and such a year, you can go back through your records and rule out certain subdivisions because, well, at that point in time, we were using the International Plumbing Code. So we don't have to do that, that survey. But those older locations, we're talking about eight to, eight to 9,000 meter locations where we can't rule them out. So we're gonna have to actually physically dig.
Lead on the city side or lead on the house side?
The EPA wants you to figure out both sides. And so we don't think there's lead. Over the course of 30 years, you've run into maybe one or two lead service lines? One. So our, our liability here isn't great, but there's still a cost to go do all that digging. And we're gonna contract. We tried to do it on our own. It was just taking all of our time. So free money, half off. I think we take the deal.
It was early 80s, 2000 downtown area, past where all the lead was. We did all that some time back.
And so that takes us through meters. Okay, so now on to facilities. We do have a, a main office that we, Water Works acquired 20 or more years ago. And we, we acquired a building that has some significant problems. Many of its windows leak. And I don't mean just dripping. There's water that pours down. And I've got a picture I can't find. Our engineers sit in office or reside in offices where the water drips down. And there's pictures of garbage buckets and cans and plastic bags to collect that water. So what you can see here is the plenum space on this lower left image where that rust is happening structurally, even on some of the structural members, not just the suspended ceiling. This isn't a good situation. It can destroy equipment. It's deteriorating the building slowly over time. We have attempted, even in the past and more recently, to try and seal it. We've consulted with one architect and they recommended you're gonna need to replace all your windows. And we asked another architect and they came back with the same, the same scenario. The problem has to be solved. Our, our break room, the water just poured in. It depends on how the intensity of storm or the winds blowing. Our roof also is not in great shape. We had a hurricane incident that we submitted an insurance claim and we got a payment of, I think, $45,000 for that. But the roof is not in a situation where you can keep patching it. It needs to be replaced. That's $600,000 by itself.
Do you guys have to get insurance on your house building? Like windstorm insurance and all that? And if so, doesn't like your insurance, like for my house, they hit me up and like, your roof's too old. You need to put in a whole new one after 20 years. Have you guys gotten that notice?
We have not. We, we did not. But when they went and looked at that one roof issue where we had some damage, they went ahead and paid that claim, even though the roof is not in a, in a good state. So, I mean, you have one.
Two years ago, it was about $1,000.
Yeah, man. So here's some structural members and, and cracking. And so there needs to be a redo on the windows. We have stucco falling off the building.
How old is the building?
Forty. You know, it dates back further, but it was upgraded and the second story was placed in the most, in the 1980s. It used to be tropical savings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so the building serves us well. The third floor has been rented out to Adams and Graham. They've been downsizing. But we've been working on this project. It started off as a much smaller project. We're gonna seal some windows or replace a few of them. And then as we got into the examination of the underlying issues, it became, you really need to redo your building envelope, which is the stucco. You need to redo your windows, replace them, all of them. And you need to redo your roof. And this is not an insignificant project. So you see the cost there. That's, that's a big number. Once, once the rehab is done, the third floor has a lot of potential for revenue. And that could be on the order of, oh, I don't want to say, just about 15,000 square feet on the third floor. We are, Adams and Graham is downsized. We have not sought new tenants because of the rehabilitation project that's being contemplated. It's a project that's been an ongoing issue for many years. And we have a design that is very near ready to bid out. And so we are planning to proceed with that project. We do have some improvements in our lobby to improve security from a safety standpoint for our staff. We used to have an entrance here. We've since locked it. It's just a glass door. But the idea is to enclose that and to put in walls and bulletproof glass so that threatening customers who come in, we've had, we've had them make very serious threats against our staff. So this is motivated by a security concern. And we're ready to do that. That's part of this overall building project, but it's an interior component. We also want to do some relocations and bring some folks from our, in our purchasing department. So we've got some relocations and these are relatively minor adjustments, but we're increasing our staffing, moving our IT over to this side of the building. And then our purchasing department ends up moving here. So we've talked about the first three facilities projects, our yard improvements. Here is our warehouse on L Street over here on the left-hand side. This is our warehouse facility and our water service operations center where our lab is located, where our water department staff is centered. And our warehousing operations are at the back end of this building. This is a yard where we store equipment and vehicles. It is a mud pit when it rains. And David's wanted to get rid of this for a long time. When it dries out and the south wind blows, all of these people up here, I'm sorry, all these residents get a blast of dust. And so we have a design that's in process. We should be ready to bid an improvement project here to pave this, to eliminate that dust problem. And we're gonna get rid of some of these older rusted canopy buildings. Cost on this is estimated at 1.7 million. It's a really large area. We would be looking at drainage swales to control flooding. We've already implemented a sewer replacement project across the railroad tracks as part of that sewer renewal package that the ARPA funds are, are funding. So that's been completed. We've got some beautification and visual barriers that will, I guess, improve the appeal off of North K Street. And so with that, we round out the long delay. If we go further down on the list, you see a generator for the main office, a generator for the warehouse, a fuel storage system for the warehouse. If you turn the page over to the 10-year plan on the water CIP, project 22 is a generator upgrade. As a result of winter storm Uri, there was some funding that was allocated under the hazard mitigation program. And we applied for that. But then also, there was a FEMA type of loan that was issued for COVID. And we were guided to apply instead or divert that application away from winter storm Uri to the COVID application. So it sat there for three years and we thought it was dead. Nothing's gonna happen. Well, we get this call saying, hey, you know, we've sent you some emails. Had the wrong email address. So it seems at this point, we are still in line for six or more million dollars to fund generators. And that would be, and if it, and if it turns out the way it's been advertised, that would be 90% grant and 10% participation on our part. So all the costs that you see on facilities for generators, five, six, and seven, our real cost would be about 10, 10% of that. And project 22, which is not on our five-year plan, but we would probably need to move some funds to pay for our 10 cents, 10% share. But that's really good news. And we're, by tomorrow, we are submitting kind of an updated response to their RFI. And we're, we're pretty encouraged about our prospects on this after three years of thinking it was over. So we've now gone through all of our capital improvement. Thank you for bearing with us. So we are, we are to the end. Just a brief verbal update on our progress. We've been working with our public outreach consultant. They will be, within the next two or three weeks, publishing a webpage dedicated to our rate plan. And it's gonna take the information that we already have. We are working customer service to get some flyers developed for customers who come in to pay. We're trying to get that posted so customers see it when they go to pay their credit card, pay their bill using credit cards. We have implemented or taken out a, an X account, formerly Twitter. So we're gonna be publicizing that way, our Facebook page. Consultant's gonna help us with that. We also now have an Instagram account. So we're gonna publish that. At the town hall meetings we've had, we've been through four of them. A few customers have signed up for advance notice on when this new information is gonna be available. And so they're gonna be directed to our webpage and our Facebook page and these various other social media accounts. There are some talking points. There is a video that is in the works that describes the process in a, in a simple to understand way. We are also, at the same time, going to be rolling out a vastly improved website overall. And so at the same time, we're gonna have a press release that advertises the website and the rate study webpage. And so we're making good progress there. So I think that wraps it up. If there's any other specific questions, we can maybe try to address that. In terms of the rate study, we are, we've, we've received some comments. And I did not hear much of a modification to this existing plan as it sits right now. So with that understanding, we can have our rate consultant proceed to finalize the presentation for the next workshop. We would like to consider doing that on either the 8th of February, which is a week from today, or Monday, the 12th, or potentially February, the 15th, which I think is a Thursday.
Is there a Thursday?
Correct. The Thursday means on the 8th.
Whether it means that the 8th.
And then what's the other two days?
Monday, the 12th.
There's a joint C, ECB on the 8th also. And the 12th, that's the one that's.
Right.
And 8th is blocked. 12th, Valentine's Day, but I'm good if y'all are good.
The 12th is not Valentine's Day.
The 14th.
Oh, shoot. I'm sorry. That's what.
I was gonna bring chocolate in there.
Yeah.
Old Cuban over here.
That's, that's Monday.
12th, I'm good.
It won't work for me.
I'm here.
Yeah.
You all good for the 12th?
We've.
The 12th, you ready?
Yeah. We've, we've polled you guys and you guys said the 12th is good. And our consultant can do it then.
If I said I wasn't.
Then you're good. All right.
Actually, my dad birthday was on my calendar. He like celebrated the 12th because he likes the presidential. My whole life, I'd budget birthday was on the 12th because he told us. Until I got to the age where I had to step forward and.
What time am I supposed to finish that?
You know.
I know.
It would probably start at 5:30.
It would start at 5:30, yeah. So we, I, I feel like we're narrowing down. And I would anticipate that this next meeting, barring any changes or other major requests, this would be the last meeting that we would have to work through rate plans.
And it's like the last three hours.
No, it should be pretty quick. Only two hours.
I'm just saying, this side contributed a lot to.
Yeah. And I do want to say thank you, Tim, for, for putting this together. It was very informative. I want to thank your board and, and, and your internal staff that, that is here. And I know it's late. And so we appreciate you being here. This is just important for us to be able to consume. I, I like to be able to see it on the map. This makes it difficult for me. And just, you know, it's great to have everything, but to be able to see it visually, see if that's, I'm, I'm a visual owner, so this helps me a lot. I appreciate that. I think having a meeting sooner than later is great. But that seems to be the only, that's as soon as that we can get it on the calendar. And that is for the purpose of the rate.
Final presentation of the rate plans. We'll have an opportunity to talk about wholesale rates. We worked with our financial advisor to make some adjustments in terms of the debt service coverage so that we maintain good bond rating. So there are some updates there that don't have a tremendous impact in the overall rates that you'd seen before. But we do need to talk about wholesale rates and, and kind of address the final topics. If that, if there seems to be a consensus at that point in time or no major changes, the consultant would then proceed to finalizing their report or publish a draft report. And that's something that we certainly would put up on our, on our website. I think our question then is how long does the board and the commission want to dwell on the public information campaign? I know we've been doing the town hall meetings and there's another citywide town hall meeting. You know, is this a six-month process? Is this a, a two-week process, a three, six-week process?
I think I would like for there to be a town hall meeting just specifically on water. And we've done a good job in the, in the individual ones, which is a small portion of the, of the meeting. But I think one where all residents are invited would probably be ideal. And I don't know that that would be at the time that we have the town hall, the commission. I think you really need your own, your own time to be able to present.
I've been taking up most of the time and all the others.
Well, well, I don't know if that's, I would, I believe that. But I, I think that we may potentially not have our town hall with the entire commission till probably the first people in March, maybe. And so that may be too late. And so I think that that's gonna be important just to be able to give folks an opportunity. Because I'm really not sure if in the town halls that, that it was, that information was relayed to the community that they would be able to obtain that information. It was great that you were there, but I don't know that that was.
I got a, I got a massive email today with all of like the requests. And so I know you gave me like a phenomenal 15-minute presentation, but the request I, I got was essentially for this presentation, the email. So I'm gonna obviously forward the, the link. Hopefully this is on YouTube. I imagine it's all saved, right? But I think that's gonna be also part of it, right? Like people need to see where their money's going.
They're gonna stick around for three hours? We're gonna have to do something a little different, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Whether it's a big Facebook post, where you're walking them through it, right? Or.
Do you want us to do a video?
Possibly.
And go watch through the highlights?
I think that, you know, I hate to say this, but I do think that it needs to be, it's, it's all about opportunities. So if folks don't come and don't participate, then there's nothing that you can do to control that. But I think it needs to be in a fashion, a form of a town hall where there can be Q and A, obviously a, a shorter portion. So that way you can answer any questions. And then obviously that, I think, needs to be recorded and streamed so folks that can participate. But I, in a, where you provide all the information first and then hopefully.
About that. And hopefully you've answered those questions already by.
questions already. By the time the Q and A comes, you've answered most of the, most of the questions. And then we, we have a set time for people to answer questions. So if you want to do a video and all that good stuff, I think that's, that's fantastic.
It has to be done. Cause like it's so much information. I think the Facebook video, if you do like a, and the one that Christina and Brandon did for like the taxes one, taxes is pretty complicated, but like within that three minutes, you like fully understood it. So you can do one on what is the, the long five delay, one video on the long delay, what's one video on the moderate delay on time. And you got to spoon feed it because until you literally spoon fed it to me right now, but last two hours, I kind of understood most of it, but I, this was fantastic. So again, how do you kind of reach that middle ground, right?
And so I know you have the consultant, but we also have communications. And so I don't, I really like the way that our team does it and puts it out in there in an easily consumable fashion. So I don't know.
And that's the animated video they're working on for, for the webpage. But when you're talking about a town hall meeting to walk through projects, that's a more detailed.
Not, 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 not like this. I don't think, because this took a very long time, but in a way to briefly touch on each with maybe a sentence or one, you know, not elaborating on so much because then you can refer everybody back to the video from today to go back and potentially look at more discussion per, per project.
How soon can we expect a copy of?
The maps are, Google Earth is this phenomenal tool for free.
Right.
It's really a GIS and it's been valuable to communicating.
For that meeting on the 12th, how soon can we get a copy of the presentation they're going to have? I'd like to get it to the commission before the meeting.
Oh, this next meeting?
Yes.
Well, I already have, I already have one that's been sent to me and so we can get that updated in the next two or three days. So we'll have it four or five days in advance for sure.
So as soon as you have it ready, give it to me so I can send it to the commission.
I had a quick, and I know, I know everybody wants to leave, but I had, I didn't fully understand at the last meeting how we would be able to capture the, like in terms of rates for apartment complexes. I'm still a little bit unsure on that in terms of like, so most apartments, I think, when I lived in an apartment, I didn't pay a water bill, but obviously that's factored into your rent. I'd like to see how that plays out because there's a substantial, you know, multifamily here within the city. If we're going to have rates go up for individual households, how are we making sure that apartments are also paying their fair share? And that can, you can bring that at the next meeting if you like. I just didn't, and you may have explained it, but I didn't understand it.
It's a good question because we categorize apartment complexes as commercial. And so those rates will be higher than residential. And then the block rate question comes into play as well because now you've got a bigger apartment complex, they're going to be on one of these big block rates. So everybody's going to be paying this high rate. So that is, that's a conversation I need to have with the rate consultant because we may need to do something differently there if it's the commission and the board's desire that those apartment complexes get built in a block rate that's more appropriate or, you know, on a, on a per unit basis that's more in line with what other single-family homes are being built. Otherwise, it's going to be a much harder bill.
Which is what I'm concerned with, that we have folks that are, you know, they rent apartments and that, we all know that that cost goes to the renter, right? And so I want to make sure that their rent isn't skyrocketing because of the fact that they're being put at a set rate and that is going to impact all of the renters. I'm just, you know, and I didn't fully understand if we had touched on that. And I remember about commercial and how those were going to be handled differently, but they're actually, you know, residence, individual.
Some apartments submeter and so there is a.
So like the duplexes and things like that are going to be different?
Well, I, submetering is on the, on the landlord's side. We don't, we don't necessarily see that. There are some complexes that have a dedicated meter for each unit. That's easy because you're just going to get assessed the regular rate. But for those that master meter and then just give a flat charge or those who submeter, I think we're going to have to talk about those because when we talk about affordability, that's, that's the issue. Affordability doesn't kick in for those folks if they're getting charged as commercial. So we need to, we need to work that through with our consultant. We will do that.
Okay, thanks. That way I just wanted not, not, not have to have another meeting.
Yeah. And if we could also have the rate, the rate people look at if other cities give financial breaks to people over 65 years old or the disabled or anything like that. I always ask that question. I'm just passing that question on to you guys. I don't know how you would, because you know, you live with grandma and grandma dies, but you still getting the benefit. I don't know.
I think, I think Tim mentioned, and I would agree. And I think we talked about this a little bit, about some folks that don't need it. Like there might be some that, you know, they're really in a, in a good financial situation, but they, they're over, they're considered over, or they are over 65, but they may not need it when you have a low-income household that might need it. And you had a, and I think we chose to have that presentation in terms of, of income, right?
The, so getting into the income question is one that we would, I would recommend very much avoid because now you've got to employ a bunch of people and ask for people's financials and that becomes a very difficult. So what, what the rate consultant has, has stated is that if, when we do that inverted block rate plan, you've got that zero to 3,000 gallon, they call it a lifeline rate. You're paying the lowest rate per thousand gallons in that lifeline rate. And so whether you're 65, if you're 65 and older and you don't use a lot of water, you're going to fall into that rate. If you're young, you don't, you're disabled, you've got a fixed income, you don't use a lot of water, you're going to take advantage of that rate. Those folks who are 65 and older and they're using 15,000 gallons, you don't want to give them a rate because they're up in a used category that, well, you're using so much water, it's obvious you don't have a great financial pressure to minimize your costs. I think the belief is, is that that block rate structure and that zero to 3,000 gallon lifeline rate achieves the affordability objective as about as best as you can do it without getting into the weeds of who's 65 and can afford it, who can't. Let's look at your financials. That's a really difficult, it is to get into.
If I remember correctly, there were those options and those options were going to be presented to us. So even though it may be difficult, those were options, right? There was one for the elderly. There was one for income-based. And so we had asked that those be presented to us.
Okay, I'm going to need to go back and look at the video. I don't remember that.
And if not, I'd like to see them.
So, okay. So you want to see basically the age-based discount on rate?
I mean, I don't think that I'd be inclined to agree with something like that, but if you want to see that, then, then I think that, you know, if the commissioner wants to see it, then we should see it. But I.
If it's feasible, right? The feasibility behind it. Cause to me, it was just something as easy as piggybacking off of your taxes, right? Your taxes, you have to do your 65 or an older exemption. It would be like, you don't have to do any labor. I don't know if there's like software that can just kind of piggyback. And if it's not doable, then it's not doable. And then that's that and that's the answer.
We'll have the consultant address that in a way the can may not, he may recommend against it, which we.
And that's fine. And that's fine. And we just want to make sure we have all the information so we can look at it, digest it. And then that's the consultant's part to be able to tell us like, hey, this is, this is, present, we can present you this, but these are going to be the challenges if you adopt this, this, this plan. And as long as we have all the information, I think that that will be, make, it might be a longer meeting, but it'll be, will be more efficient and productive and we don't have to come back again and ask more questions.
There may be, there, and there still may be some other questions that linger, but whether you need an additional meeting to talk about, or you just move to finalize.
Will you pay the consultant each time they come, right? So we want to make sure they're.
We kind of got them in a lump sum kind of a deal, but sometimes they charge only what they consume.
Usually they charge you a fee and then every time they come down, they bill you separately for that.
Which is why I want to take advantage of the one.
Yeah. The last, the last workshop was, the last joint meeting was done remotely because we were on the plane.
Right.
Still going to bill us for all the time we spent at the airport. Okay. In terms of, so if we worked out a town hall meeting just for rates sometime in the latter half of February, then we might be in a position to start talking about public meetings to consider adoption. I know one of the issues, we've got a deadline of March 1st. Unfortunately, it's that early. The next round of state revolving fund applications for the next cycle are coming due. And there is a disadvantaged calculation which does ask about your current rates and we may be able to dance around that even though they haven't formally been adopted. I'm going to guess that any kind of a meeting to consider an adoption process in February, it sounds like it's going to be too early.
But you need that, isn't that what we, we've talked about?
We need to, we need to do some investigations into finding out whether it's going to make much, it's going to make a significant difference. So if an early adoption makes that difference, then maybe we press for it. If it really doesn't, we've got another way to work around that and then we wouldn't rush the issue. I, I know there's some sensitivity, you know, in the, among our residents about, oh, you're trying to rush things through, but we spent a lot of time already doing that. And I think for, for our public outreach consultant, giving them some guidance in terms of how much more we want them to, to, to press forward and other things they might want to do.
What was the, what was the committee's guidance, like forward and, right?
Well, we only met the one time and it was about her preparing the video and doing all the things that Tim just addressed, social media, intel. So she's taken those steps and all the work.
And they, and, and much of that hasn't yet been released, but I think within the next two weeks is when that website, that information is going to start getting posted. And certainly once we have an approved or not approved, but a written rate plan study, then people can go read that and understand in more detail. Most folks won't, won't read it, but we'll have videos, we'll have the plan.
And I think, Mayor, they said that the average public outreach time was about 30 days, so.
Well, I don't want you to lose out on any opportunities because we're delaying. So I want to be able to work with your, if you could just let us know at the next meeting if we need to move it along, then we need to do, we need to do that.
Would adoption require two public hearings?
For, for the.
The rate adoption?
Yes. Cause it'd be an ordinance.
So, so, you know, perhaps you can check the box if you've had a warrant, but then you're still talking about something perhaps the last week of February. And that would be a special meeting, but I think that's as early as we could ever get there. We'll look into finding out whether we need to go there or not. Otherwise, I think we'll be looking at March.
Just keep in mind that we haven't even seen the final rates yet, so it's hard to say.
If we meet on the 12th, we might see a report a week or two later. And so we're already nearing.
So that won't even be the final one?
Later than after the meeting?
Okay, so we will, we will have the final, we'll have the next meeting on the 12th is what I'm hearing. And so that, the consultant will then take that information and then pen the written report.
Well, I thought that's what they were going to give us, the final report.
They're, they're going to give a final, basically what we've been doing before, but honing in on some of the new numbers, talking about wholesale rates. They do not have the written report at this point because we've not zeroed in on what that, what those options are. So the consultant's not going to determine the answer. They're going to finalize what those plan options are and then it's up to the commission and board to decide which option to take. It's going to take, it's probably not going to happen February.
Okay. Mayor, we just have one more item on the agenda.
I've gone the whole last year of February.
Okay, yes. There's no action on.
Yeah, we're going to recommend, man, no action on that, so.
Okay, so.
I'll take a, I'll make the motion to acknowledge and approve the presentation.
What are you?
Number one. Presentation by, just acknowledge and approve it or acknowledge.
Yeah, there's no action for that. It's just.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, okay. Yeah, that's a weird way to worry about that. All right. So is that a motion?
Just move on to number two then.
No, that is, that's what we're talking about. Discussion and possible action, but we, yeah, we already, we, presentation was just number one, but the item two was discussion and possible action by the city commission regarding presentation by Harlingen Waterworks to include the possible creation of a capital improvement advisory committee to consider land use assumptions and capital improvement plan for water, sewer, meter, and facility infrastructure. But we're not taking any action. So I think we just.
Mayor, because the committee that the commission created earlier does exactly that, so we don't need to do that.
Right, right.
But I don't know if you want to acknowledge the presentation at that item or not.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
All right. Then we're going to recommend no action.
Right. And so then, so that is it. We are adjourned.
Okay, sounds good.
I want to thank you all very much. Long night.
Do we need to adjourn as well?
Yes.